Okay, I will call the order this April second meeting of the Grand County Commission. Present are Commissioners Clapper, Winfield, Dean, McCurdy, McGann, and myself, Mr. Walker. Jac Hattler is out of town and will not be attending today. First thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have citizens to be heard. And keep in mind, we will have a second citizens to be heard at six o'clock. But we don't know exactly where we will be on the agenda. At that time, we might be through a lot of it today. The agenda is relatively small. So speaking now is probably the better bet. So anyone in the chamber just want to speak? Yes. And please, everyone, please state your names for your talk. And generally, I'm at Compostel three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. You know, my name's Aaron Lindberg. You know, as you guys know, on the planning commission with you guys. You know, we're, we were having this, you know, me and Tricia had a couple editorials going on different points of view. About land use code for, you know, we're having issues with. People outgrowing their home occupation. And so last night, you know, I was looking through the land use code. And we have this nice chart of what's permitted in what zone, like large lot residential, small lot residential. And then we have a separate section on home occupations. And I feel there's a disconnect between the two of those. Like, it's like, you can have a home occupation. When you read the home occupation, it's like up to three employees. And I'm like, well, imagine that over at Murphy Flats with that 500, like, that doesn't fit. And I'm, I'm just seeing, you know, I see the need. That we have, like, take the Moab heat and cool thing, right? I mean, we need HVAC people in this valley. And part of the issue is, is like, we do not have. At like this, like, middle space of commercial property. You know, I'm in a, I'm in a lot of places and I like, you know, I went down to the, like, I use this as example, like. Down at the business park, which I know is in San Juan County, but this is an interesting example. There's a lot of commercial spaces around here that's used for like. Some rich guy out of town parks Jeep, which is fine, like, do whatever you want. But I'm like, every one of those is like, oh, man, that's a commercial spot that's like, not usable now. For like, essential services. Like, when we were at that meeting with the Moab heat and cool, I mean, I voted it down. But I was still thinking, like, everybody here is going to a nice warm home. And that, like, like, try to get a service call for, like, HVAC. I mean, we're gonna start paying a thousand dollars. For somebody at Grand Junction come out. So is there any wiggle room as we're looking at that future land use code and stuff? I think it needs to be kind of resolved in both directions, be more restrictive. On home occupations and more open because like a home occupation on a quarter acre lot. Is a lot different than on five acres. And how does that interfere with the community? And it's like. You know, I, I just think that maybe now's the time to kind of look at that on those things. So. I put to Bob, like, on our next meeting to be like, hey, is there places where you guys are willing to like. You know, change, willing to take a look at that and change. So that's my two cents on that. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
My name's Dave Closer and I live on 500 West. And I'd like to share a few thoughts and concerns around the Gang Creek project. I previously given several reasons why I believe the CUP for the wastewater treatment plant. Shouldn't be approved, at least until Kane Creek can clearly document their ability to build, operate, and fully integrate this treatment. Plan into their proposed development. One thing I've learned in my experience building homes, creating furniture. Is, is that as much as we plan and prepare in advance, unexpected challenges will almost always come up. And we will need to deal with it. Given this, make sense to address and prepare for everything we can see before we begin. To hopefully minimize the inevitable challenges we'll be faced with later. But as I widen my scope beyond the CUP and consider the entire project. Building the floodplain is coming into focus is possibly the biggest challenge. Entire seventy-five or so acre development is going to be raised one foot above the 100-year flood level. Either the developer or the county will need to raise Kane Creek Road at least, at least to that level. So a large shelf is going to be built over a mile long. And this shelf will need to stand up to future floodwaters. There is so much to consider, especially for a project that will take many years to complete. For example, during a flood, what will happen, what will happen to the BLM land? In the floodplain just to the north of the filled property? This is the area around the bottom of Moonflower Canyon. Will the floodwater push against the fill and back up into Moonflower as it tries to find its way out of the main channel? And given the scale of this project, it seems clear the developer will need to build in phases over at least three or four years. But the river has a mind of its own. It doesn't care about schedules or phases. It may not flood for a hundred years, but it could flood this year or next year. As the developer begins their project, will they proceed with an awareness that the river could flood any year? And be prepared for this possibility to ensure the safety of everyone involved? Finally, in, in my many hours that I've spent now digging through FEMA and INTP regulations online. One sentence has continued to come up. To some version of, in quotes, it's the community's responsibility. To approve or deny permit and to regulate the process of building in floodplain, in quotes. FEMA and INTP ultimately leave it up to the community to determine if the area in question is, quote, reasonably safe from flooding, in quotes. They know that the community, that all of you, combined with the building and planning department, ultimately know what's best for our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Two sweepings in a row take exactly three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Kevin Dwyer. Resident Moab, Utah. Appreciate the Commissioners and staff today being here. I moved to Moab in 1990. I moved away in 2001 and went up to Salt Lake City. To pursue a couple of graduate degrees. While I was up there, I would watch the evening news. And on the evening news. I would often see reports of traffic accidents in Moab. It seemed odd to me, like, more often than Vernal, Heber, St. George, and other places. Last spring, myself and Karen Guzman Newton. A former Moab City Council person. Received scholarships to the Wasatch Transportation Academy. That's a program of the College of Architecture and Planning at the University of Utah. We were paired with a graduate student and we were able to study a particular traffic issue. Moab's Highway 191 Main Street. And we found that it's quite dangerous by general standards. We were, we presented this information to our class and to the reviewers, including people from UDOT. And they said, you should continue your work. And so we did. And over the winter, we compared Moab to other communities across Utah. We had the UDOT new metric safety database to access. And when we looked at per capita, per vehicle. And per accident fatalities and serious injuries along Highway 191. And particularly in downtown Moab. Downtown Moab, as compared to comparable communities, has a serious injury and fatality rate that is many times. The numbers of these other communities. We're talking 200, 300, 400, 500, 600, 700, almost 800%. Depending on which measure you use. And we're gonna be presenting these findings because we have some ways that you all. In conjunction with the rest of the community and city can quickly and at low or no cost, change the odds. And we're hoping Monday night, April 8th, at 6:30 PM. You might join us over at the library, because that's where we'll be talking about this. And we have flyers. You may see them around town. And we'll be able to answer questions. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? It is, it looks like there's no one on Zoom. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for the comments. Next agenda item is a departmental report from Personnel Services.
Good afternoon. Let me share my screen here, but we will make my department report fairly quick because I get to come to you all fairly often. And show you what I'm doing and working on. Which is annually, annually, us department heads are asked to present what we are working on in our department. Um, like I said, I get to come to you all for various reasons. And present what I'm doing for the most part in my department throughout the year. So I would like to just make this a really quick. Presentation on what we do in Personal Services. And then also some exciting. Developments of the first quarter of 2024. So of course, our office serves to. Serve as the catalyst to ensure employee success and performance. Of the county's mission in keeping the focus that our human resources are our most valuable asset. Our department handles compliance at the federal, local, and state level with labor laws and other relevant policies. We also handle the employee career cycle, performance management, payroll and benefit administration, and then also risk management and workplace safety. Now skip quickly over the compliance, employee career cycle. And performance management sections and go right into our payroll benefit administration. I think the most exciting thing is just on Friday, I got an update. So Cigna is our current health insurance provider. So along with a 0% increase. In our premiums when we renewed for 2024. The way that we're funded with Cigna as a level funded plan, meaning that we pay. Our premiums as well as portion of the claims that employees. Make against our health insurance plan. And so with that, there's a chance that you will run a surplus on your plan. And in 2023, we did. We are receiving, receiving a surplus of $305,357 this year. So what Cigna will do, we'll just start taking that off of our bill monthly until that $305,000 is spent up. And I just ran a quick calculation. So that is gonna start coming off of our premium costs, not of our claims funding costs. So out of the premium cost, it's about a third of the year. And then we also have some exciting things coming out of risk management, workplace safety. We just got back our workers' comp renewal for 2024. Our policy renewed yesterday. And our premium on workers' comp is down 25%. Equates to about $33,000 in savings. I do want to point out, and I have a best slide that kind of illustrates it, but our, in workers' comp, we were trying to. Always lower this E-MOT, which stands for Experience Modifier. And we want that to be as close to one or below one as possible because that equates to, right now, we're paying a dollar fifteen of premiums. If you're at one, you're paying a dollar. If you're below one, you're getting a discount essentially. So for the last couple of years, we've seen that steadily go down. Well, that's not true. It went up there and then it started to go back down. I'm gonna hop to the next slide because it does just really nicely illustrate what that E-MOT impact looks like. With the increase to our estimated payroll for 2024, we still see that decrease in our premium. And then the TARP is the Team Appreciation and Recognition Program. And we have some exciting safety rewards going out each month this year for that. And then additionally, in 2023, we only had two medical cost plans come out of workers' comp. We like to see it there and not in the higher. We do have some goals, kind of just for the department. I'm going forward, seeing that. Surplus, I don't want to spend all that money. I know it's exciting to get a bit back, but. I'd like to bring up the discussion again of a compensation or a total rewards comprehensive study. I was able to receive a certification for compensation analysts, but I think. Bringing back some type of consultant or firm that handles a total review of that would be a good. Next step in looking at our compensation structure. Then we have Leadership Academy coming out for our department heads and supervisors. This will be a six-week course that we're gonna hopefully start later this month. And this will just help, it'll be an internal class focusing on leadership skills and internal policies for our department heads. And then, of course, just continue to maintain and update our safety and wellness programs. As we can see, that provides a direct cost return. And keeping our costs low and our employees happy. So I'm gonna quit because I get to come to you a lot. So any questions?
The study is regarding, sorry about that, the rewards study. Sure. So are you instituting that? Are you asking?
I think I would, I would be asking for something to be put out. And maybe we need to have some type of workshop to get y'all's philosophy on how to move forward with that. I know we had brought it up during budget time, but with, with things looking as they did. Now we have a little bit of padding with the surplus back from Cigna. We can maybe, maybe look forward to that this year.
So you'll, okay.
Yeah, nothing, nothing to set in stone quite yet, but we bringing that discussion back up.
Any other questions?
Thanks for that.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is Commission Member Disclosures. Do you have any disclose relevant to today? And next we're doing Commissioner Reports of Future Considerations. Be unimaginative. Start with Evan if you're ready.
Yeah, the end of the month is always pretty quiet for me. And then we had this longer one. I think the main thing that I have to report on is the Canyonlands Healthcare District is reviewing their bylaws. And there may be some edits coming to those. So just been trying to read the gripping bylaws and. Make sure they're all applicable to what we're actually doing and vice versa. So that's all I got.
Yeah, let's see. I've had a few meetings this past couple of weeks for sure. I had one with the Utah Rural Leadership Academy. That took place. There was discussion in there around, actually, Washington County and. Some water projects that are going on down there. Biden Administration is participating in. I was in the tripartite meeting. There was discussion there and also a question, I don't know who that would go to. But to find some of the Moab Area Transit Ridership numbers, they're very curious and will follow along with that with some stuff in Emery County. Uh, let's see. There was some problems in Emery County with the Emergency Solutions Grants. There was some fraud going on between some landlords and tenants. And they were basically, I think they watched the movie Catch Me If You Can. They were redoing checks. And there were some arrests made in that, but there was a little bit of money lost. Until there was a rest, that they literally, I think they watched that movie. The way they were going about it, actually, I think Wells Fargo can be prevented. They were the ones that finally talked to it. I was also part of the Cert Executive Board meeting. There will be a sales tax leaky report out soon. And I think Gabe and I talked about that a little bit fast. And then also there is a Main Street Southeastern event that's going on tomorrow, the 3rd at 4:00 PM at the Grand Center. That's for anybody that's interested in Main Street. Too bad our citizen be heard as well, but might have been good to invite him to that even because it's just individual businesses. There are different things, traffic on Main Street, and that's being put on by. Louis, so paper from Cert and Price. I possibly butchered her first name. I apologize for that. And then I was part of the South, the Southern Advisory Council to Colorado River Authority. And there was a lot of discussion, of course, around the Colorado Rivers and the upcoming. Pact that will end in 2026. It's the current authority over the river. There was a lot of discussion about water use in Utah. Some interesting facts, 80% of Utah's water is agriculture. 20% goes to commercial and residential. And for some reason or another, they broke out some numbers on Washington County again. Washington has actually flipped 20% ag, 80% commercial and residential. On their water usage, Washington County has removed 1.2 million square feet of sod. So some pretty big numbers there as far as. Sod in our desert. Let's see, John Curtis is sponsoring legislation to get additional funding for the sea energy control on the Colorado River. Al is at 33%, me is at 37%. Just some numbers that they were putting out. I was also in Airport Board Meeting Monday. There was discussion there and I've been in the meeting the previous week also with Senator Lee Staff who came to town. Jason Taylor, Randy Martin, Tammy Howland, and myself met with Mark Willicar. And that was part of the discussion at the Airport Board Meeting as well. Employments for February 2023 were 859. February of this year, 273. Redtail Air saying that their fetal cells are almost non-existent at this point. Canyonlands rentals did 5,000 rentals this year, 21,000 last year. So the contour error. Change from SkyWest affecting our, might just our airport, but our business is out there. In a big way, and that's what the discussion with some Senator Lee Staff was around. The need to get our EAS to a little bit better standing. Hopefully, we have some service someday in the future again with Denver, Salt Lake. And as far as, I think that's all I've got, maybe one item for the future. Mallory and I discussed a little bit. We got the Planning Commission. Has approved the survey replat for Thompson Springs. And so we probably need to start our little committee and move forward out there, getting signatures. I tried to give with Elise to give a little more information because she spoke about it. I would say maybe the next meeting, we have a discussion, we can get that committee set up. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Um, let's see. So we had a meeting with Evan and Jacques and Utah Open Lands regarding the. Closure of the campground at Castleton. And I think it went really well. I think that, and I should say, the Planning Commission, or, or excuse me. Planning and zoning was also within that, in that meeting. And I think it went really well. And we're looking at. Bringing that bathroom. So basically, our understanding is that bathroom. Really, there isn't any paperwork to, to show that that was, you know, went through the Health Department. So to get that up to code and then. Possibly going like historical use kind of direction because that, that campground has been historical use for. Long, right? Like, so it was a really lucrative discussion. WISA, I went to the WISA meeting. They discussed the Moab City interconnect. And they're proposing, so the city of Moab is proposing putting a water tank at the four-way stop of Spanish Valley and Spanish Trail. And that that would be where the interconnect would link up, which that means that, you know, they have the ability to gain water from groundwater or sewer or vice versa. There is some issues. We've had some citizens reflecting on some issues with that site. Specifically, the geology of the water table there. So hopefully, once the city of Moab, they think that they're gonna get the money for that tank. They'll be able to do some engineering and making sure that that's the appropriate site for that tank. But there is some real geological issues there. They're gonna put in a new automated loadout at groundwater and sewer. So that's kind of cool because people, you know, in the past, you couldn't get water. For example, on the weekend or at night. And so now you'll be able to do that. And the lake is again full, but they have systematically kept it full. And so I'll state that it's not, it's just, they've been putting water through the Shealy Tunnel to keep that lake full. And soil moisture, though, is still, you know, at 9,500 feet, 25% saturation. And this time last year, it was 46% saturation, just so you kind of keep that in mind. Irrigation should be turned on by now. Secondary water coming out of Ken's Lake. And then groundwater or Grand County. Grand County waters, anyways, I don't know why my brain is stopping. But anyways, they have, the governor has appointed. The two individuals to that board. We've had a lot of discussions and he pulled one from each list, Ben Wilson and Steve Getz. And so I think that that worked out well. And let's go on to the Planning Commission. We did discuss, thank you for bringing that up, Bill. That the road right of way will be coming to the commission out there in the Thompson Townsite. That should help with the adjustment of that plat. Basically, you know, that plat was, has been off forever on the north side of those tracks. The one thing that Mary Hopline brought up, which was interesting, because, yeah, you have to get everybody's signature on that plat. On, was that she believes their state law that you don't need their actual signatures on the LAR. Like, if that makes sense. So anyways, they're looking into that. But. Thank you for bringing that up. And they're still discussing the, just updating the landscaping ordinance. It's getting a little. It's, it's difficult, you know, it's, yeah, it can go in all different directions. And the last thing is I, on Friday, I went out to. The Elm Greens with Tara from the museum, Moab Museum, just to look again and get kind of her advice on the Rubidoo inscription. So if you guys don't know Antoine Rubidoo, there's that massive inscription that is in the museum itself or the replica of it. And that the actual inscription is on the Elm Greens Ranch. And it's really spectacular. A portion of it is fallen off and then the rest is, it's on private land. So they're constantly dealing with people that are trespassing to look at it. And just like, what's the best avenue with the State Historical Society to get that some protection? Anyway, so that, she just did kind of an advisor role. So that was, that was pretty cool. She was smitten because that place is unbelievable cultural resources. So that was it. Yeah.
I'm a little faster as the end of the month is slow for me also. But any discussion or any items that I would be talking about tonight. Angie's actually here to talk about. We have four, action item four, five, seven, eight, and nine she will be talking to. So. And the discussion item. So I'll let her take care of that during our regular session.
Okay. I had a solid waste meeting on the 20th. We had a discussion on how we could lower the cost for people on limited incomes. We're very excited. We're fully staffed and we have been working to help employees that want to get their CDL. And we're working really closely with Utah State University. And it's, we've had two people graduate from that. So that's.
And it's, we've had two people graduate from that, so that's wonderful news. Uh, on the twenty first, we had Canyon Country Partnership. And we changed it up a little bit this time, I wanted to change it up for a while because there's too much setting and talking and. And the goal of Canyon Country Partnership is to learn what other agencies are doing. But it's also an opportunity to, uh, create, you know, learn, meet people and know them and network. And so I had the discussions only last till eleven and then we broke up into, uh, three groups and. Hiked around Dead Horse Point, it was delightful. And it was very, I was very pleased because people, it did change the dynamics, people afterwards were sitting around talking, going to different people. You know, the in, the networking improved tremendously with that little break, so. And there we learned that Bear's Ears ninety day period comment period is through June eleventh. We're hoping people not to realize that the plan is eight thousand seven hundred pages long. So it's pretty big, so anyway, that was, you know, that bearsers was discussed quite a bit, uh. I thought it was really interesting that the Utah, the, uh, Division of Oil and Mining. Uh, reported that, uh, the oil operations production last year was fifty five million barrels of oil. Which surpassed, surpassing the previous production of only ten million. So I think it's very clear that the reason we're not getting enough, uh, so much money put into our C I B law. Is more due to the fact that the amount under, uh, the Trump administration was lowered so much. That we are getting very little payback like we were pre. So it would be nice for us to talk to our legislative bodies and see if we can get that. Back up to where it was prior. Because they're not paying hardly anything now. Outdoor Recreation Initiative, uh, will be introducing a new program with approximately nineteen million dollars available. And it looks very much with fingers crossed that we could see the gap between. Uh, that goes, that stops on the trail on the river to Grand Staff. So that's right now the top of their list of what they want to do. Uh, Dead Horse Point State Park plans to continue, uh, continue a six-mile trail expansion on the Far East Rim. The Utah Raptor will, is still on schedule and will completion date is in November. Camping in the park is starting and really picking up and they expect a busy, uh, spring. Uh, the water supply study for Mathis Wetlands is near completion. And part of that study is studying, understanding the brine level underneath the preserve, so I'm looking forward to that study coming out. Uh, if you're interested in hunting, big game, the, uh. Application period, uh, opens on March twenty first. So it's already open and runs until April twenty fifth. So that'd be, uh. Uh, Range Creek Station, uh, the lottery for reserving the Big Game Hunt Campsite will also open in May. And they're gearing up for their geo- geo- arche- archaeological summer. They have thirteen undergraduate students with seven more on the waiting list and they have three graduate students. And if anyone's interested in living out there for a while, they are looking for a part-time person to work at their facility. Uh, Canyon, uh, National Historical Association has had record sales in two thousand twenty three. It's the first time they've hit, they're hitting ten million dollars in sales, so they were happy about that. The seven houses they bought for a soft landing for new employees for the soc- for the Forest Service B O M, uh. And State Park, while they're looking for housing, so they have a soft landing that they get to stay in those houses while they look for a place to live. So it's really helping with recruiting people for our busy season, which was a real problem in the past because they didn't have any place to live. Uh, on the twenty sixth, I went to Four Corners Behavioral Health, uh, meeting and the Public Health Board meeting. Uh, it's exciting in Price, we're going to have a receiving center and a detox center opening. The receiving center will be open in June and detox center afterwards and it will be available to Brad County as well. And they will be coming here, hopefully in the next couple of months to give us, to present to the commission. What this added resource is going to do and how it's really going to help, because we just. If people need that help, there's so rarely beds open at any of the places that the state offers. So that was really good news, uh. The Health Board, uh, their, uh, they did their frost, fraud, fraud risk assessment and they came out, it's having very low fraud risk. Which was good and, uh, they are working on. Okay, that, this is the economic and the economic development meeting, it was during spring break, which is always tough. Because people are gone, they're always gone, I ran in a few minutes late and they were praying, I showed up. And, uh, we discussed the U S U Cooperative Agreement update, they worked on their bylaws. And just like Bill was talking, there was a lot of discussion about the ripple effect of the change of our airfare. How it's having this huge ripple effect and how getting to Moab is so expensive. It's more expensive than getting to almost any place else. Uh, and so that's really having a tough impact on our economy. So we, that was discussed, so that's.
Thanks, Mary, um. I was out of town part of the last few weeks, so I don't have very much to report. I, um, I did go to, to a cooperator's briefing for the Bears Ears Plan. Um, that was pretty interesting, they had given, um. A preview plan in November, which, you know, we weren't supposed to disclose details, but I think I did say to me, it seemed like a pretty. Extreme and unusual plan. And, um, I'm happy to report now it's kind of back to, I think, spent a lot of time in D C and calmer heads prevailed. And now we're looking at a much more vanilla sort of land management plan. Um, I guess this is more a future consideration, but, you know, Grand County will need to decide, you know, whether and. What way to, to weigh in on this. Um, I wanted to throw out the idea that we just mainly focus on, um, recreational access, including climbing access. I think community members, you know, people who live in the Moab area, that tends to be their main issue. I think it's something that other, um, cooperators and local governments are, you know, it's further down on their priority list. So I, I think that, I think we would bring a unique perspective of that and, and then. Like the flip side of that is that we wouldn't try to submit, you know, comprehensive comments, um, on every aspect of the plan. Um, I, I think that's, yeah. Well, yeah, a, a, a lot of pages, but, um, also, you know, it's in San Juan County, I think they're in a better position to comment on most of these issues, so. Um, so I was, so I'm just throwing out the idea of nearly focused comments, I, I think at a future meeting we'll need to, you know, look. You know, vote on something, we, we can speak as commission. And if, if, if any of you are interested in more details on that, please, please get in touch. Okay, that brings us to elected official reports, start with Stephen if he's ready.
Sure, um, first and foremost, want to give everyone a heads up that on tomorrow out. Front of the county building, we have a pinwheels for prevention. Um, it's going to be from three o'clock to five o'clock, that's hosted by, uh, the folks at the county. Family Support Center, so I encourage folks to come out, I know that's maybe competing with other things, but it's three P M. To five P M. Um, I was able to attend the E D A meeting with Commissioner McGann, uh, the commission will look forward to having. Their bylaws that they've updated and then that U S U, um, agreement adjusted for the commission for its consideration. Additionally, we had an update on B R C lawsuit, um, the, the county has had, in, in what I view as a success. Uh, they've dismissed the claim, uh, the majority of the claims, one claim remains, only one count. And it's just dismissed the majority of the defendants as individuals, so all the commissioners, uh, council members from the city. All of those claims have been dismissed with prejudice against those individuals and were left with one claim, which is a declaratory, uh, judgment issue. Both sides are going to file their motions for summary judgment and likely will have oral arguments on that in August. So that's exciting news for the county as, um, the ability for them to get substantial damages is now no longer a threat. So that's good news for the county, that's everything I have.
Thanks, Stephen, um, Gabe.
I didn't prepare much for a report today, uh, Squire Accounting Firm is going to be coming tomorrow and Thursday to. Uh, help the Clerk Auditor's Office prepare for Larson, um, to come to, um, complete the, the onsite external audit, uh, next week. So if there's anyone out there that's planning on, um, attending a board meeting that's normally held here in the chambers. Just know that, that, that's likely been moved, um, I don't know if all of them have. But well, yeah, we'll have the auditors in here in the chambers all next week for most of the week, um, and so, yeah, just very busy, uh, preparing for that.
Oh, okay, uh, Jamison?
Yeah, just, yeah, I'm gonna share my screen. Let me know when you can see that.
We can see it.
Oh, sorry I missed the February meeting. Um, as you guys can see, in February is on the right or on the, uh, the gray snowy photo. Total calls into dispatch, two thousand one hundred and twenty five, nine one one calls, three hundred and seventy. Deputies responded to five hundred and twenty nine calls, hundred and fifty eight traffic stops. Twenty five arrests, papers served a hundred and twelve, three search and rescue calls, March, we're starting to get busier now. Uh, fifteen arrests for March, start calls at four, nine one one calls, uh, six hundred and fifty one traffic stops, two ninety seven. Papers served seventy three. Calls and dispatch three, three thousand and eighty nine, calls deputies responded to seven hundred and twelve. That's, as you can see, we're starting to pick up, a lot of that was due to the Jeep Safari Week, which Jeep Safari, uh, went fantastic. We had no major incidents to report on Jeep Safari. Um, and then the, the last thing I would talk about is the. We found some bones that were identified as Timothy Jordan Boone in the book cliffs, we were able to identify those bones with the State Medical Examiner's Office and. Notified the family and so we closed that out and that's all that I have for my elected officials' report.
Thanks, Jamison, uh, Mallory? Administrator report? No. Okay, uh. Brings us to the end of the reports, um. And so now we will proceed to our general business items. Uh, the first one is approving an additional full-time labor position, the Grand County Roads Department, that's Renee and Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Alright, um, we do have an ask from the road department to add a third, oh, labor position. So they do currently have two labor position, um, and I'll let Bill speak to the need of, of that position. But I did just want to point out in my, um, attachments to the agenda summary, you see the proposed costs and then the full, at full and estimated. Uh, generally when we budget for a position mid-year, we still capture the potential full cost for that. Um, so that would max out at eighty six thousand seven hundred and thirty eight dollars. But in actuality, if we hired right away, it would be closer to sixty eight. Um, and that's assuming that this person would come in with two-party insurance, so just a note there. Let Bill take away.
All right, well, thanks, to give thanks for Renee, uh, off, for, she actually wrote the background on this and. It's like she kind of read my mind, uh, but having said that, hopefully you read the background, because it kind of covers it in a, in a nutshell. But I've definitely, uh, entertain any questions and I can bring more detail into it if you'd like.
So, so one thing that wasn't in the background and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, this is coming out of Fund Twenty One, which are funds that are earmarked for maintenance of P roads. So this position is not competing with any other hires we might want to do. And there, there was some discussion earlier today about wanting to review all of those at once, but I think. Because this is a different, different fund, it, it seems like it would be fine for me to.
Correct, it's not out of the general time.
And I will say, uh, uh, that, um, Bill came into my office and ran this by me and, um, you know, as, as was just clarified. That the roads department is largely self-funded by, by specific tax revenues, um. And Bill has, has always managed his department, uh, conservatively, uh, within budget, so I have no concerns, uh, regarding this, uh, expense request.
I move to approve the addition of one laborer position for the Grand County Road Department effective. April second, two thousand and twenty four and authorize an update. To the twenty twenty four pay plan.
That was the second, Bill. Okay, any further discussion?
That pay plan adjustment is just to account for this new one or is, it's not a change to the laborers?
Nope, it's not a change to the grade or anything like that, it's just to account for the additional position.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote, on paper. That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Renee.
Guaranteed no potholes, right?
Now you want some detail.
Okay, our.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is a, um, TASER purchase agreement for the Grand County Sheriff's Office. And that's Sheriff Wiggins. Jamison, are you there and ready for this one? Okay, so maybe I'll postpone.
Try it.
Or you want to do it? Okay. Or, or, or we could just rearrange the agenda.
Um, not now, to give it a go.
Okay, I'll take it away.
This is obviously for new tasers, um, and it is an amount that's paid for. Uh, a little slice each year for five years, uh, and it is within the current budget for year one. However, because the agreement is for five years, uh, we obviously needed to bring it to all instead of. Processing it on the pre-authorized list, uh, and so. Gabe is also aware of that and can speak to this, but it would be, uh, just something that would need to make sure we're budgeting for each year.
You have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, not at this time. Is there any questions that I might be able to ask?
I'd like to make a motion, I've moved to approve the TASER purchase agreement for Grand County Sheriff's Office with Axon Enterprise Incorporated.
Sorry, you seconded, I was.
This is covering, uh, hardware or just training or?
Um, just the purchase.
So are we gonna get a new bundle of tasers every year, so what's happening?
Oh, and certification. Certification, uh, some courses, warranty battery packs and a license for all of those. Oh, there's quite a few. Certification of battery.
Yes, and the, so law enforcement has to maintain certifications with the TASER programs, they have to frequently update it. Tasers are good for a certain period of time before they fall out of their correct usage period, they'll only cheer them up to a certain period of time. I don't know if that answers your questions, but that's just, yeah, just general information, after that point, they can't use those tasers any longer and they have to buy. A new stock of tasers and then they have to get recertified up, uh, and they also have to get training for. Normally within each law enforcement agency, they'll have an individual that's certified to train all the other, um, officers.
Okay, so, and this, um, multi-year contract that's pretty standard for tasers is that.
It's, it seems similar with what I've seen.
Okay. Need further discussion? Not, and then I will call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed?
I'm abstaining, I'm a little confused, but it's okay.
Okay.
Got what it needs.
Passes five zero one uh, with Commissioner Clapper abstaining.
Give the next one a go as well.
Okay.
Uh, so this one is interesting because it is a multi-year subscription, five-year. We did receive a grant for ten thousand dollars that will pay for the first year. However, because there's a cloud-based system for the body cam footage, uh, we do need subscriptions. And so the next two years are then just under ten thousand a piece. Uh, but again, this one, we actually have to pay all of it upfront, so it's not a matter of, uh, you know, budgeting pieces each year, but rather paying for it now, uh, deducting the ten thousand for the grant that we received. And then that will require a budget. But it would cover all of those. Ten new body cams uh, for the next five years.
And just additional information for the commission, uh, the body cams, how they work, they um, activate them, they're supposed to activate them anytime that there is a situation where they're on a stop. All of that information and data is collected. And then once they get back to the Sheriff's Department, they have to download all of those videos onto a software. Uh, all the, all the data onto hardware at the Sheriff's Department and then that information's transferred over to my office. It's really important that we have body cam footage because uh, the courts, uh, it's called a Tiedemann motion. If the courts deem that the county or the law enforcement has failed to maintain or obtain evidence consistently, then we can get cases that are dismissed. So it's important that we have uh, the body cams, body cams themselves, that they're functioning and that the software is there to be uh, supportive of that. So this is something that from my point of view, not the applicant, not the person seeking this, but it's really important that the county has uh, a good software that's going to work well. We've had good experience with Motorola in the past with my office and downloading videos, even though they're quite large and it's a lot of data, especially when you have a case that has, let's say, seven officers responding, we're gonna get seven different, you know, one or two hour videos from each uh, each deputy.
Bill?
I move to approve the Motorola body cam purchase agreement for the Grand County Sheriff's Office.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Bill, seconded by Trish. Um, had a quick, where, where was the grant from?
I believe it is through the state. It was definitely through some facet of the state, I can.
Okay. That's good enough. Um, any further discussion?
Might we be able to get that grant next year again and apply it towards this?
That is a good question. Uh, I don't think that we technically can, and that's where this purchase gets weird. Um, to read through, I think it's specific to equipment and so while it's set up that year one that would pay for the equipment, I don't know that they would see the other years as covering that versus the subscription services. But we can certainly give it a go.
Anything else? Okay, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, that passes unanimously. Next item is a resolution establishing and creating the Grand County Fair Advisory Board.
I can kick it off. Uh, just, uh, it's come up in the past, kind of the desire to have a board uh, for the county fair. I know Angie used volunteers and now that they have a budget and a very large budget, uh, that's people advising on that expenditure of taxpayer dollars. And so that triggers a public body. Uh, and then I think putting this as an independent uh, fair board, it comes from just the need for the entities that are involved in the fair to have a voice, uh, and kind of make sure that it is a county community affair. And I don't know if Alicia has anything to add to that, but and she kindly did a bunch of research and put together a bylaw and resolution as well as a menu of options, as I would call them, uh, that were open to talk through for what the membership looked like. And I would just note that the entities called out on this would have to have ex-official uh, decisions. So you guys would not appoint them, they would just give them a spot and they would be able to determine their agency would serve on that. And the citizens would go to an application like our other boards. Uh, and so it would be different since this is brand new, so at the next meeting, you all would make those appointments for the citizens uh, versus the body doing interviews and making that recommendation.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I would add is just that this, um, the bylaws that you see in there are, is like a sort of a template that we created with Stephen and I think Evan and I think we looked at it once before, but so we're trying to get to a point where we can kind of move all the boards to a uniform process, so that way it makes a lot of this board process and a lot of these questions that come up with the boards, um, a little bit less confusing for everybody. If everybody, kind of move everybody into using a template form of bylaws, it kind of helps uh, clean some of that up a little bit. So that's where this template came from. Um, but yeah, otherwise.
The representative from Thompson. I don't know if it's going to be part of the forum. Uh, I know we haven't been able to have a Thompson Fire District because we haven't been able to get the volunteers. And uh, Utah, the Ultra Project has never been successful at getting someone from Thompson or Crescent Junction on that. A joint, so I, I just was wondering if that, you know, if you might wanna a representative for Thompson.
Considering these, maybe it would be helpful um, for Angie to come up also, cause I think so.
You know, and that's just, you know, I'm okay with it, but I just know that it's incredibly difficult.
I will just add putting that as an option on there. I think the thought behind that, creating that option was that there was one representative from each community within the county. So that we were keeping it, it's the, the county as a whole, but it, that doesn't necessarily mean that's the way you have to go. I mean, you know, actually you can mix and match the whole list if you want.
Well, I just know that that could be a problem.
Which of you goes first?
Bill's first.
I guess. Number one, I struggle why we need another advisory board. We already have boards that oversee her out there. In my mind, what the fair needs is somebody of board that's set up to work and help her. She needs people who are out there putting volunteers together, take the help. There's all kinds of help needed out there to take the load off of staff when you have a, uh, I don't know what the numbers are, but thousands of people showing up, it requires a huge amount of volunteers. So in another advisory board, I think we're just creating more government. And Thompson, and I, I understand we don't have to pick Thompson, but if we're gonna go to there, then we better get somebody from Cisco, we better, and there's we're just creating something that draws down the Thompson Special Service District. They struggle to get board members as it is, so. Number one, an advisory board, I'm more in tune, let's put together something that's a working board that helps her out with this fair because it, it's a huge load and every event that goes on out there requires volunteers. Uh, I know Larry participates with the Jeep Safari. There's a huge amount of volunteers that make those things work and I really feel like that's what the team needs out there to draw this in, but I know Mike sits on a board. There's a couple of boards that already oversee what we do out there and I, I just I'm reluctant to put another advisory board together. I mean, I, I saw several bills ran in my time up at state legislature this year and I don't know which um, representative it was, but they call him the bill, or the board killer, because there are so many boards that they're just such a load on communities everywhere that it's we should be looking at reducing board, not increasing them in my mind.
Mike?
Um, with that ask, uh, to actually expand on some of Bill's points here, uh, really, I think we should have, I mean, it's roughly five, six hundred feet from uh, San Juan County, so there's a lot of our valley residents that would benefit if we were throwing uh, San Juan residents on there too, or San Juan advisors. Uh, I, I like, I like advisory board, but I, I, I know Angie and I mean, going over meetings and going over hosting meetings, uh, like Bill said, uh, hands-on uh, is far more of a need than what to do. Uh, it, it's a, a, someone needs to someone needs to take over s- uh, security, someone needs to take, or at least the, uh, the direction of security, someone needs to take over uh, direction of carnival games, someone needs to take over. Uh, it needs to be a, a, a hands-on board uh, versus just an advisory board. Uh, I, I would love uh, some input from uh, I, I like optional one, or looking at that staff level, but uh, having those people uh, who advise, actually partake in the event would be a paramount to anything. Uh, anyone who advises to this should partake in it, or be required to partake in the event. Uh, I am not, uh, on the advisory or yet, but I will be partaking and helping you in the event and we need more patience.
My turn. Uh, yeah, I, I, I think the board is important, but however you wanna, you know, advertise it, I guess, if you wanna make it advisory and participatory, however you wanna state that, I think it's important. I think the way that you've laid out some of these members, I have a couple of other recommendations, but I'm, I'm not like you said, San Juan County, I actually think the Conservation District pulling somebody from there. Cause I think the more that, I think these, these entities will be able to you know, pull in other volunteers also. So that was just, that's just another idea, but I'm not.
So do we maybe need to do some straw polls of one, like do we want a board? And then two, if so, how many members?
Yeah, we can
Okay.
Get to that, but I, you know, maybe give everyone a chance to talk first. So Evan?
I was just gonna ask for a little more background about what led to the resolution.
Um, so I, I definitely want a board, but I was hoping for more of like a fair board. Uh, which would be a working board like other fairs have, um, where there is more of um, committees, um, as far as sections, like Mike was saying, like there's, like the members come together and they each have their sections as far as entertainment, security, uh, rodeo parade, um, categories along those, but they also have their roles as far as who's allowed to vote. Um, so when those decisions do come up, when uh, the financials come up and they decide, you know, who their entertainers for the years are gonna be, or yeah, um, what their budget's gonna be. Uh, where they're sitting financially, um, what the theme's gonna be, all those type of dynamics of the fair. Then that's where the vote comes in, that's where the decision-making comes in. Um, that's where the credibility comes in. I mean, that's how the other fairs run their boards and it's broken down based off of, you know, each county's specs. Um, and we can set that up however you want, however our county wants, however the commission wants. Um, cause our county is a little different, we're not quite set up to have stock shows yet. Um, it's something we want to i- in the end, uh, but we're not quite there yet. We could do some small stock, but not the large yet. Um, so our fairs run a little different. Uh, we wanna get there, but we're not quite there yet. So we just have to categorize ours differently right now. So, but to have a working board is something we definitely need. It is a lot, it's time-consuming. Uh, and I'm just trying to make it all work.
And if I can say, I, I think the function would be, it, this is the voting group and from there, it's where you would have the ability to kind of mold that into what you wanna okay, there's this subgroup and you guys take on volunteers, you do this, I guess. Divide and conquer, but at the end of the day, if they are making decisions financially or, you know, for county taxpayer dollars, I, I think it does trigger a board requirement. But I, I'm not sure.
I, I think that there's gonna be a, a big expenditure for a different, a bunch of different entities, but I don't know that it necessarily triggers. It depends on how, how you're meeting with individuals and that's the part where a lot of this gets sticky. Um, the question that I was gonna ask, you, you had help with the fair last year, right? Do you know, and not to put you on the spot, not to say who did great, who didn't do great. Do you know what entities did volunteer back then? Because I, I think if the board is going to be successful, you're going to find the entities that are most, that, that they want to show up. I mean, we can, the, the commission can create a board. Whoever the commission wants to, they can pick on these. But if you don't get people that are passionate about this and want to pull up their sleeves and do the work, then the composition of your board is going to be less important.
Right.
And, and so that's, that's one thing that I would maybe encourage the commission to consider. Now, it being a board versus a committee versus a, a group, I think that's the other thing that you've got, that the commission and needs to decide and wrestle with. What is this going to be? Is it an advisory board? Because if it's an advisory board, you're an unvoting member, your staff, you were really not leading the charge. Chair would be leading the charge. And so that's another kind of funky nuance as to what do we wanna see this entity be? Uh, and so the commission could theoretically create a subcommittee and put a bunch of commissioners on it and create uh, uh, you know, a subcommittee to do these things, but I don't know how much oversight they wanna spend on this and that's kind of the other.
And some of the fairs are ran like that with, um, where the commissioners run the fair board. Uh, they'll put like three commissioners on the fair board and they run it. Uh, so it, it is, it depends on how you guys wanna run it.
What entities helped you last year? I think that would be thing for the commission, know what entities were, are they contained in the list? Are they, were these folks, and if you don't wanna say, that's fine.
I, I mean, it was really, it was really OSA staff that, that ran it. I mean, we had a couple of volunteers, but as far as, um, it, it was businesses that, that helped. It was mostly just businesses.
One more point, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I, I mean, I, I think people are making a lot of good points. I have not really thought about this issue, issue before today. Um, I do know that, yeah, many people spoke to the need for like, you know, more volunteer help with the, um, with the fair, but I, in my experience, one good way to recruit volunteers is to give them a little, you know, like put them on a board or give them, you know, a little bit of autonomy. And so I, I think this could, I don't think this board automatically will give volunteers, but it could be a good first step. Um, we could e- even consider putting directly in the charter that the board shall set up, you know, it's called working groups to do the, you know, the various discrete tasks that, that feel there's need, that more people working on. Um, I, I think another good, good thing about boards like this is, um, you know, just community buy-in. I, I think, you know, it, it's, it's really hard to make government participatory, you know, people, you know, like who wants to sit through a long meeting like this, you know, look out, be honest, almost nobody. Um, but I, I do think, but we, you know, we've got a lot of boards and commissions throughout the county and, um, and I, you know, not, not all of them are, are functioning at full efficiency, but I think, you know, a lot of them are. And I think a lot of good work gets done and it's a way for people to to sort of become involved in the community, help, help with these community purposes. You know, and not have to like, you know, send us technical emails and sit through long meetings. So it's a, it's a good avenue.
Uh, two quick points. Uh, first point is, uh, with creation of the board. Uh, it's from just what I'm reading, it would put more work on Angie. Uh, and really, we need to do everything we can. I can, I can only promise you, I could go into detail on that. Uh, we need to relieve work from her. She has her day-to-day duties. I could, I can only promise you, I could go into detail on that, uh we need to relieve work from her, she has her day-to-day duties. That we need to get uh done and adding more on top of that would uh is non-beneficial. The second point to this is, um, right now, uh fair points for this year are on hold. Uh pending this decision, uh and we, okay.
I I mean, I personally, that, unless it's something else, I just don't like the idea of. It's a lot of money, uh you guys gave a huge budget, and so when questions come to me at this point, it's like, well, it. If we're gonna do this, we should slow down and have other people, but it's also very late in the game, I know that there's agenda items on this. Uh so I don't think it needs to put everything on hold, but I do think that. It's good to have, you know, it's a community thing, especially if we're using it, you know, we wanna attract people.
Yeah.
Bring them here, stuff like that.
No, I.
I changed.
I would, uh, again, uh love some oversight on that, uh and some buy-in, uh volunteer buy-in, but uh. Uh well, I it feels we're too deep in the game uh this year, uh for any decisions or creation of a board. Uh to effectively have a fair in in months, uh I mean, let's, let's get this fair through and. Uh let's make a decision, but but, I mean, Angie ran it exceptionally well, thank you uh for your last running of it. Uh I know it's a ton of work, uh we go over it quite often, uh it's just, we're a little late in the game this year, uh for. Not that more buy-ins would be uh looked down upon, but that more buy-in is gonna create. Uh a slowdown effect, we're too close to this fair, uh next year, it it, we could take a little deeper look at that. Or into the next, you know, a month past it, but uh we need. The decisions that I think Angie's making right now, uh and some of the action items uh that we'll talk about, uh they need to be decided on quickly. Uh because fairs, fairs, fairs approaching, uh July fourth is approaching.
Bill, did you ever handle?
Yeah. Um you know, to Kevin's point, I really think that we've gotta get community buy-in here. Um to just have another advisory board, if, why can't we use the board that's already there if we want an advisory? Board and somebody to help make decisions based around money. We already have a board there that could be helping with that, but if we're gonna get community buy-in, we need people who wanna take on certain areas of this. And make this a community event, that's, that's what we're trying to do here with the fair is make a community event and so. I'm I'm fine as long as we're careful with the structure of the board to just put together another board. Who gives advice on how to spend this ten thousand dollars or that thirty thousand, I I think that we should. Push that off on the existing board for right now, as we make up this other board, we. Put it together with people that are part of the public and that wanna be a part of the fair, there's a huge group of people. That wanna be a part of the rodeo, there's a group of people that wanna be a part of the Jeep Safari, and so we've gotta get. Those people that are passionate about those items involved in this board, in my opinion, so that's all.
So, but when you said the existing board, you meant, like the OSA board or the uniformed board?
The the board that Mike sits on out there, I I don't have the acronyms off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Oh, so, so just looking, I was kind of just quickly looking, I looked at my hometowns, because we had a monstrous county fair. But I'm looking at Weber Counties, for example, and they do have a county commissioner, but then their board members are exhibition, security. Right, junior livestock, so that's how they're delineated by basically their position. And I think there is value in that, because you're talking about a working board, that delineates what that person's going to be. I do think we need to get started on that board, I'm fine with the idea that it's, if it's after the fair, that's fine. But I think we should probably start getting the pieces in place to where. Literally right after the fair, we're starting to advertise for those positions and line them up and we get rolling. Um so maybe, and I'm not saying you guys didn't do a great job, but maybe we look at a couple of these other structures. I think this is an interesting structure, because it is delineating more of like per- a person that's interested in security. That's gonna be their role, right? A person that's interested in junior livestock, that's their role. And so, but I think we need to start, we need to keep rolling on this.
It's more defined membership, you are a citizen representative for. Security.
And I, and I think Angie and your board could could delineate where, what are the priorities, right? Like you know, if it's entertainment. Right?
Right.
You have X, Y, and Z, and then we start rolling from there.
The only thing, and maybe there's a way you can be mindful. And I know you already are, but I do think that there are community partners who are passionate and want. To be more involved and I think, I would hope that they won't look at this and see, oh, well, we.
Right.
We don't, we aren't welcome to have a voice or we aren't seen as, you know, people who helped last year.
We want them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think just messaging about that.
And maybe that would be if it's exhibitions, for example, maybe the preference is four H. If it's ju- d- does that make sense?
Right.
Like that representation, maybe you can delineate that that makes the most sense, junior livestock, it makes the most sense that it's FFA. Represent, you know, however you wanna to 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 delineate, I can't speak today, have you guys noticed that? I literally can't get it out of my mouth.
Perhaps, perhaps a good idea would be to have a table or a booth at the actual fair that says. Next year, we're looking for even a a box or something that says, next year, we're looking for people to be on an advisory.
That's a great idea.
Please sign up, we wanna hear your voice, and then you could try to, because the people that go to the fair obviously are interested enough to go. And you know, they'll be like, oh, they should have painted this gray, you know, whatever color, and then they can join on and help out.
So one, one question I have though, it's if, um they are working with volunteers and they are. Termining like how funds are used, does that not, like, do they need to right away, structure that as a subcommittee? Under the OSA boards, they aren't violating.
I I I I think really it goes into, we have, we have departments every day, like, you know, road sheriffs, all the different departments have funds. I think the tricky thing is if we're starting to go outside our our normal purchasing policies and we're saying. You you know, if Angie talks to Citizen A, it says, oh, we wanna give, you know, we wanna do security, well, Citizen A is like, oh, I've got a friend, you know. X amount of money, we'll give that person all, I think that's gonna create problems, but generally, if they're following. If if she's not delegating that authority to anybody else, I I think she's, she's okay, it's publicly disclosed that the funds are gonna be spent on the fair. I mean, if we wanna have more traction on it, I guess you could, you could put it under the recreation board and and kind of.
Like, that would be different, so it's special services.
Well, true, that's fair, I I don't see, I I don't see right now. The issue, there's obviously somewhere where it's going to go and you've got a department that's in charge of it, so long as she's not going outside of purchasing policy. I I don't see the, sorry.
Okay, you don't think it's a problem?
Who, if if it's just Angie deciding on it, I don't know if there's, like, I'm trying to get. Wrap my head around what is happening now, is she creating a mini-committee of five people and and those people are making the decision for her regarding. Where the uh where the funds are going, if if that's what's happening, then yeah, there's some problems there, but if it's her deciding. That's.
Then she can. Have a board.
No, what I'm saying is she shouldn't, she shouldn't be having a body, like if I all of a sudden decided. That I'm going to assign, everybody in my office gets a vote and decides how they want the county attorney's budget to go. Well, then I'm, I I'm trying to delegate that responsibility, she shouldn't be doing that. So it's like on any of my line items, if I wanna change my line items, I don't have to have, you you know, an OMA. My, you know, my my county district board's gonna have to have amendments and adjustments to stay compliant with law. Um but you have departments that have substantial budgets, they don't have, you know, they don't wanna make expenditures, it's already.
They wanna have volunteers, right? Like you wanna have a volunteer talk about your budget.
Correct, but I don't know where the volunteers coming in and deciding the expenses, that's where I.
And I don't help either, help.
I mean.
So I I wonder if. Maybe we should wrap this up for this meeting and.
Uh, does, does the resolution specifically uh. Define the bylaws? It sounds like there's some support for, I I think that if there's public money being spent. And that I would appreciate having minutes kept and some some more formality, especially if we're inviting. People from the public end to to weigh in on that, and so, and if you think it would lighten your load, um I would be in favor of creating advisory board. But it sounds like the bylaws and the makeup of it isn't necessarily ready to go rock and roll tonight, so. Could we approve the resolution to establish it and then their task with uh.
Creating their own bylaws?
Yeah.
But you wouldn't have it, you wouldn't have individual members.
Well. I th- I'm thinking about like with the CJCC, we were kind of like, who are we gonna fight? Who do we want at the table? Who's supposed to be here?
Sure, but the 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 state statute created our beginning players, like we had a commissioner and a county attorney.
Yeah.
We, yeah.
So so maybe a way of accomplishing the same thing, where you just have like a straw poll to see if most of us wanna establish some kind of board. And then we, you know, hammer out the details later, so, does that work?
Yeah, and and I could say that I like the idea of Trish's, uh so to start the straw poll, I'm in favor of having a body. I like the idea of just three grand county citizens, you could invite people from all over so that we're not excluding anybody. And I like the idea of kind of having, like on sand flats, we have a motorized representative, we have a non-motorized representative, you know, so if we had. Ag representative and entertainer representative, because.
I like that.
And then.
Yeah.
And leave it up to the, or.
Right.
Yeah.
That's good.
So what's the panel?
So I currently have uh my OSA bylaws um in for review, cause they need to be updated. Is there any way that we could kind of just tweak this into the OSA bylaws and merge them? And make them mesh to where um. The OSA Advisory Board conjoins with the OSA Fair Board, um and that goes together. Um currently, the OSA Advisory Board consists of um Red Rock Four Wheelers, a Commissioner. Equestrian, uh Recreation, I don't know if maybe we could add it to where we could add four H, um like or USU. To that, um as a member, um and then we have rodeo on there. And then maybe a citizen, I don't, or does it have to be limited?
I I think to Bill's original point, uh having a subcommittee might be that much cleaner.
A subcommittee, but yeah, that's, that was, that was just my point, is maybe just merging the bylaws.
Nobody would like this, it's bad news, I know. But I actually, for something else, was looking at those bylaws yesterday and I think. Uh, like the memberships, a few years off, like I think there's people with four-year terms, when it's two years, there's supposed to be. I I do think that there are some changes that have to happen there anyways, so. And if that's what the commission wants is to create, to kind of reset, redo the OSA bylaws and. Clean up the membership, just to be in compliance with what's in there already.
Okay, Trish, the mic.
I had my hand up for a long time, I've been really good this meeting. Um I mean, I do think having a fair board is really commonplace, when I look down, I just pulled up fair boards, Utah, right, county fair boards. Box Elder, Duchaine, Wayne, Summit, um Iron, it goes on and on and on, most counties do have fair boards. So I I think to say, well, this is just one more, I I I think it's commonplace. And so I think to take the time to go through some of these and just look at their makeups and and. I kinda like the way that Weaver's was set up, it did have a county commissioner also, but I think, I think we need a separate board for the fair, that's my opinion.
Mike?
Again, uh revisiting that point, uh. I know the OSA board uh currently would be willing to take on uh if this, if this in any way can be. Delegated to, uh we decide this after uh this fair, uh I I see that being a boon to this fair. Uh again, the timeliness, uh just re- reiterating the timeliness on this, uh fair is coming up.
No, I think for now, I think that that makes sense to just keep it with the OSA board, but I think we should be in process of, yes.
Okay, so um I would like to end this agenda item soon, so if anyone else hasn't spoken, wanna say something?
Gabe's coming in.
Can I just comment?
Yeah.
Um it's just important too, in the creation of the fair budget that will be presented for y'all's review, I think it's important to. Keep in mind that the the fair as it stands is largely funded by transient room tax dollars, so it's in- important to. Sort of maintain buy-in and support from the Travel Council Advisory Board and and whatever budget goes to you all for approval at the end of the year, so. I'm not sure if these, the, you know, a committee based on activities is necessarily appropriate to speak on, you know, tho- those, that use of funds.
And I, but the the option, the membership options in the packet did have Travel Council Advisory Board, right? Disposition, yeah, I I think that's important to be like, even create an additional. I.
Could you temporarily assign the duties under the OSA board? And then we can work on kind of their.
That'd be great.
Their membership and they could make, you know, they can be passed with, I hate that. Passed with kind of what they think membership could look like. And bring that to you all, or is that just created in one word?
I'm not sure, I understand, so for the time being, the OSA board plays that role, that will. In that some future meeting, we'll get some recommendations for creating a separate fair board?
Yes, and it might be too ambitious, ambitious, but maybe at the next uh meeting, we can have. The bylaws and kind of go through the historical membership and. Figure out the term stop and adding some other members, like Angie was saying.
Okay.
Okay, so OSA is going to handle it the fair for this year? The OSA board, OSA board is gonna handle it for this year, and then we're gonna troubleshoot that, some of the membership, fix it now. And then once that's established, then in the future, we're gonna see whether that, whether we create new board, keep it, or keep it with that, it's kind of what we're doing, right?
Although, yes, I think it sounds like there is the designer who have a fair board, but for. Right now, we're gonna just focus on the OSA board.
Okay, so it sounds like to me, we're, we're not taking any action on this agenda item, we don't need a motion or anything like that, but staff understands. I mean, actually, do we need to do anything formal to give OSA board a role?
Want them to make a motion on that, so then there's a clean record of how they all of a sudden began dealing with this, final issue.
I make a motion to uh direct the OSA Advisory Board to be responsible for. Uh the two thousand and twenty-four county fair and that we move forward with the creation of a county fair board.
Six, okay, motion by Mary, seconded by Bill.
That work? Okay.
Okay.
Seconded by Bill, yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Passes unanimously.
Always raises.
I'll be right on the volleyball too, don't worry.
The items that take time, I don't, sometimes surprises, I know.
Sorry, gotta finish my thought here.
Next agenda item, resolution affirming support and formalizing the sponsorship of the four H program. Just stay powerfully.
Yes, um so I did send something a little earlier with just a tweak and that's been updated in the packet. But this is just kind of affirming the support and sponsorship. Um of four H through USU and just kind of trying to. Affirm that these are programs, clubs, yada yada, that we definitely want county facilities to utilize. Uh it also does have a sponsorship component in there where they um. Would be able to have a special event with certain criteria, but um I think for the most part. Most of what they are doing is not requiring that right now, it's just using.
Okay, and you sent out a revised version, that's that's not, and but it didn't have any red lines, so I couldn't easily tell what had changed. Okay, well, maybe I just don't know, maybe it's an operator error. I don't see any of mine. Oh, it is toward the end.
Yes.
And there's no fiscal impact of this support. It's not that kind of support.
Not. Not necessarily. If they were to have something enough as a special event, I I don't believe that there would be. And most of what they're doing right now at facilities actually falls under the exception for these.
And they're not uh talking about moving. Stuff away from USU into county facilities, just having county facilities.
So just, just for the record, let me just say that the uh, the new version. Adds an item, inserts an item two C, which reads, you know, four H may utilize Grand County facilities for activities that raise money directly. For four H programming and then adds a sentence to the end of two D, which says. Um, exceptions will be given to events that generate revenue for nonprofit or charitable organizations. So if, you know, so if you wanna approve that diversion packet plus the changes I just read.
I move to approve the resolution supporting the four H program clubs with the uh amendments that yeah I just read.
Like seconds, so motion by Bill, seconded by Mike, further discussion. Okay, all in favor? Passes unanimously. And next item is um resolution adopting the Grand County Social Media Policy. And Valerie's name is on there.
Well, I, I would ask Stephen to speak to the changes. This is, I think, from. January and I, I know he wanted to make some tweaks and wait for some things, so.
Sure, yeah. So um as I brought up last time, you guys have in the packet, uh, and so this rest of the public have uh my write-up and comments on the document. Uh, just going through some of the things. I I think with the Supreme Court ruling, I I think it's gonna be really difficult for individual commissioners to make comments on. Items that are gonna be very important to them in their private lives without triggering a a potential issue. Uh, so, so first and foremost, I, I would probably encourage, like the last time, I would encourage commissioners to make certain that they're. If they utilize social media, that their personal accounts have that disclaimer. And I don't think Commissioner Heding was here last time, but there was a Supreme Court that came down, it's freed versus linked. Uh, and essentially the Supreme Court had a unanimous decision, they had a bit of heartburn, there was a city manager in a small town, population thirty thousand. And he had made some comments about some activities that were ongoing with the city. And some of them feared beyond just comments on it, and so he started engaging with individuals in the city about updates during the pandemic. Uh, somebody wasn't very excited about how that particular city was handling the items, so he started commenting on that city manager's. Uh, profile. And so the city manager started deleting his comments and eventually blocked him. And the difficulty and the problem that the court had is whether that individual uh official, whether they triggered some sort of. Uh, violation of that person's First Amendment rights by blocking them and not allowing them to see. What the city manager was putting on there, because there could be an argument that that. Uh, official was utilizing their personal account to create some sort of notice to the constituents in the community. So the reason why I bring that up is, right now, if any individual commissioner goes off and starts commenting on certain things. You might run into some problems or individual commissioner could run into some problems with dealing with. People that you don't necessarily want to deal with. So that's, that's a uh a connected issue with the social media policy. So first, I I do think your elected officials, both all the commissioners, um, your assessor, your sheriff, your attorney, surveyor. Uh, treasurer, reporter, they all have a First Amendment right to be able to have uh social media and to reach out to their constituents. So some of the edits that I have on here doesn't allow the county administrator to restrict, uh prohibit. Or cease any social media activities that those individual electives have. Now, they are always subject. Uh, to OMA, Grandma, um, all of the ethic, rules of ethics. And that's on section four, Commission Administrator approval required. So I've added in a second paragraph that basically carves out and says, look, for the umbrella of the county, definitely. County Administrator can control whether each individual department within that umbrella, whether they have social media accounts or not. That's one hundred percent within. Uh, the county administrator's role, but whether to go out and to say a different elected can or can't have a social media account. That goes beyond that scope and that likely infringes on that elected official's First Amendment right. So what I've done is I've made edits to this. That strikes the difference between number one, electives can have social media accounts, they have to co- comply with all rules. Just like everybody else, um, and then secondarily making some edits throughout the document. In the next section, some of the rules and conduct, I just wanna note um on page. It's gonna be page four, uh, item C, the difficulty with monitoring our social media accounts. Uh, is going to run into more issues with First Amendment and then actual monitoring. So on item C, the Supreme Courts have indicated that people can use file language. Now, it can't be vulgar, discriminatory. Uh, but they can curse. There's a very famous case where somebody wore a shirt and that said F the draft, they didn't use, they used the full word. Uh, but courts have continuously allowed uh language that isn't necessarily very popular um to be utilized. And then the second. Concern that I have is on item J, misleading information, it's gonna be really hard for us to kind of track down and monitor for that language. Um, other changes that I have are very uh minor. Uh, I go through and add some notes on item seven, blocking and reinstating users. I I think that's, for the most part, it's gonna be fine. The one that makes it a little bit harder is item eight. If they don't have the ability to seek an immediate appeal, uh, it's gonna be item eight on page six. Uh, I I think that's gonna be a little bit tricky when determining egregious violations and then whether they have an appellate uh recourse. I think um they should be able to have a right of appeal uh more quickly than necessarily a year. Um, apart from that, just some minor changes where we say that they can't complete Grandma's request to just reorganize the wording on that. So those, those are my basic changes, nothing exceptionally uh unique. I took out the word official. Uh, that word's in a lot of places and reordered words. So for the most part, it remains intact. I did make an interesting note. We have a county employee, so on section three, number one, it's, it's currently two A. We do have a county employee currently that is both a county uh employee and ran a campaign, so I just kind of changed the. Uh, we have a city council member that works for the county as well, that ran a campaign in a re- reelection, so I just kind of reworded that just slightly, so. That's my basic input. If anybody has questions.
Um, and actually, well, one thing I'm gonna clarify, I never had the intent of saying that I would control anybody, so. So I just wanna make sure that when we talk about officials, that's, that was not it. I took this on entirely from the city. Uh, but the other thing, kind of period. What you shared, I would maybe ask the commission to post how, so we can talk with that. About some things and make sure that we have his input and that we have ways to capture everything.
Yeah, I, I, I was having additional time. I think one of the funky things uh about the document. Is it utilizes the the word official um on number ten. And so it says official means any Grand County Commissioners elected officials. And then if you go down to the subsection, it says. The Commission Administrator. Oh, it says shall first authorize all official county social media accounts, which it's created for. Right.
Official as.
Sure, but it still maintains the fact that it's going to be a county account. Like at the end of the day, even though a county elected official is going to have an account, it's still going to be under the purview of the county as an entity, not necessarily. Uh, underneath the kind of the standard county umbrella, just now.
So.
I'd like to make the motion that we table this then until we get that portion of it worked out. I mean, I would be fine if you wanna do that behind the scenes. I'd make the motion to approve it with Stephen's recommendations. If we wanna move it forward more quickly, otherwise my motion would be to table this.
I'd suggest making just one motion to you.
I think the problem, the motion, I think that also cuts off all debate, so maybe uh.
Right.
If maybe let people chime in and then make the motion, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also just say, if you don't want to approve this today, I, that's fine. I just.
Um, one thing, if if we work to approve today. In some cases, you've struck through, but in other cases, you've just flagged something and said, I think this is problematic. So we need to be clear what we're probably striking problematic things about you. So I think, but maybe if this is gonna come back at a future meeting, it either needs to be struck or not.
Sure.
Um, and then I have, maybe I'm just showing my social media ignorance here, but um. It it seemed, you know, this, this, these procedures for blocking and reading state users just seem really elaborate. I'm just wondering, is that? Necessary, or can we, can't, I mean, for the county, I'm assuming the county has social media accounts just to get information out there. Would it be simpler if we just? Disabled comments on them? It's that, that possible?
That's really helpful in many, many circumstances to just turn off commenting altogether, but then the downside is. Getting, well, well, updates kind of, but getting public input on some of the issues. So, but it's, yeah, it's, it's exceptionally frustrating if you have what you think is a nice beautiful picture of a sunset and then somebody comes on. Shares their opinions about the county's response to whatever, and then you create a debate off of that, so.
And if I can ask something, I think um. One question I asked before was if, in the meantime, while this is sorted out. If we could start a county page and just not allow comments, so we can start with the basic information sharing.
Yes.
Not like kick it down the road, but we just would not allow comments for right now.
I I think that's, I think that's always a very, very safe way to go through it, is to not have comments, but it does. It's a question, kind of a policy for the commissioners, access and ability for somebody to gauge debate and comments and everything else. You turn it off. You lose that, but it's so much easier not to moderate all of this back.
And I think the more immediate thing would be just getting going.
Sure.
Yes, so if you're.
Do we need a motion for that? You have to go ahead for a.
Well, if you, if you just got general policy established, oh, I mean, options are, if you guys. Tabling this today, that's one option. Option two is uh approving it in some fashion or form with uh additional changes. Subject to the approval of Matt Siniseros, uh, Mallory Nasod, Steven St- Steven Starks. I mean, I'm perfectly fine with that. As well, I, I'd love to get input from both Mallory and Matt on this.
Okay, well. You'll get to make the first motion.
I find the order either way.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, in the past, some, sometimes we pass the policy and then we continue to amend it. So to a meeting, so maybe we just approve this, you know, some version of what's in front of us, with the understanding that. We're gonna change it in a few months to address some of these concerns, but that'll be enough to, you know, get us going on the. As we wanna do, I I do think it's a good idea, maybe to start with. The comments turned off.
Comments turned off on the new account or the existing accounts?
On the new account.
Yeah.
The existing accounts are already.
Okay, okay, I can make that. I move to approve the resolution adopting the Grand County Social Media Policy with the edits that the county attorney has made. While also allowing admin to start a county. Social media page with comments turned off at this time. That's efficient.
And additional input from.
From the IT and the admin staff in uh the final draft.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Trish.
Well made.
Okay. And again, we, you um, there is that ambiguity I noted earlier that, you know, county attorney edits. Do you wanna clarify whether you meant striking the sections that Stephen just highlighted or leaving it in for now and fixing it later?
I I think the three of us can figure out making the adjustments.
Okay, so that's, so that, so just, just striking through the strike through, but the highlights, those are the highlights they didn't work out. Okay, great, okay, that's motion. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll for vote, all in favor? Passes unanimously.
Yeah.
Okay, we got three to go. Um. All right, next agenda item is independent contract agreement with uh Parentis Rodeo for uh twenty twenty-four Grand County Fair. Andrew.
Welcome back.
This one's the rodeo?
Yeah, rodeo. If you wanted, you could just talk about all three of these generally and then we could make three quick motions.
Uh, so the, the first one is, stay here. Is the rodeo, so um. One of the entertainment pieces for the twenty twenty-four Grand County Fair um will be a. A rodeo, which um this I see that you'll be seeing is for Parentis Rodeo. They're a stock contractor out of Grand Junction, um, and there'll be two nights. It'll be Friday and Saturday night. Friday night will be what is called um. A rodeo and they'll be doing what's called branch games, um, and um, it's timed events. Um, kinda hard to explain if you're not in the rodeo world, but they'll do um events like. Teams, like saddling up your horses, loading them into trailers, kinda like relay races. Um, on Friday night and then Saturday night will be your typical rodeo barrels, um, roping. Bulls, things along those lines. Uh, so that's what this ICA is for, is that stock contractor. Um, and then the other ICAs, the next one would be for. Um, Caleb Austin. Caleb Austin would be our Friday night headliner. For the concert. And then. The last ICA would be um for the Sean Moon Band and Keith McLeod. So they're together, um, it's the same. They uh manager and same company, so they've been put together, but they'll be performing on separate nights. Um, Keith McLeod, it will be the opening act for Friday night and Sean Moon Band will be the opening act for Saturday night.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Wanna make the first motion?
I got you.
Good.
First motion, I move to approve the independent contract agreement with Bear. Bearin?
Parentis.
Parentis Rodeo for the twenty twenty-four Grand County Fair in the amount of twenty-three thousand one hundred dollars. Conditional upon receipt of the certificate of insurance naming Grand County as additionally insured.
Which we did get.
Okay, is there a second? Mary, second, motion by Mike, further discussion.
I have just a couple of questions. Is this a junior rodeo? Is the, okay.
No, there will be junior rodeo activities though. There will be some slack available for the local youth to participate in.
And what was your total budget again? I'm sorry, I'm just.
It's uh.
I can't remember.
I have it right.
Is it a hundred, okay.
Yeah.
So it's like a quarter of your budget?
Um, it is, I have everything right here. The whole total is. It was a hundred and ten thousand six hundred and twenty.
You're okay with this being a big chunk?
Yeah, I have everything broken down.
Okay.
And I did um speak to Kelly from the City of the Lab and it does sound like, uh, the City of the Lab's gonna be contributing what they did last year.
So, okay, good, good. So, okay, good, good.
Any further, Mike?
Just listening with most most county parish, uh that rodeo is one of the headline uh headline events, we hope to draw a crowd.
You're talking around first, Mike. I watch rodeo every day.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Not call for a vote, all in favor. That passes unanimously, um who would like to make the next motion, Bill?
I move to approve the independent contract agreements for the twenty twenty four Grand County Fair with Caleb Austin. In the amount of two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. I believe I put an S on agreements, should be agreed.
I'll I'll second that.
So a motion by Bill, seconded by Trish. Any discussion? Not all call for vote, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Just to make the next one.
I got you. I move to approve the independent contract agreement with Keith McLeod and the Sean Moon Band. For the twenty twenty four Grand County Fair in the amount of five thousand three hundred dollars. Conditional upon the receipt of the certificate of insurance naming Grand County as additionally insured.
Second. So seconded by Bill, motion by Mike, any discussion? Not call for vote, all in favor. Passes unanimously. That brings us to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda has uh. Four items, the first is approval of meeting minutes for March fifth, twenty twenty four. Item B is ratification of payment of bills. So the total bills is one million. Four dollars ninety five cents. That breaks. It's the total bills, the total payroll, it is uh four hundred four thousand dollars, so eight four four hundred four thousand. Eighty five dollars and eighty eight cents, grand total, that's two million three hundred forty eight thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and eighty cents. Item C is ratification of the statement of responsibility for. Bureau of Land Management's deal and grant application to extend the pathway of state. Twenty eight. Item D is some updated dispositions. Is there a motion to approve, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Bill. Uh all in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we're now to item eleven, which is a discussion on special events and legacy event criteria.
Hey, uh I would like to start by noting that it's been almost a year since we've changed ordinance. Last thing was in May, so that's fantastic. Uh and then a few things that we wanted to talk about would be. So we're gonna go through the idea of legacy events, when we were talking about some criteria and what that could look like. And then we realized that in the past, uh we actually had an ordinance. Like six fifty eight in twenty nineteen. Uh I think that's the wrong number, but we put together uh. A section that allowed for a pre-authorized approval. So that's something where you all have the ability to say, okay, these events uh you know are. Going to be okay to proceed, they can kind of, they still have to go through the process with the application and referral agency approvals. But they can kind of get that ease of the the thumbs up, uh so going off of that concept. I can turn it over to Kate and uh with little PowerPoint, uh cause she ran with that and just an example list. That I printed for all of you of what it could look like if you guys were interested. And I think that will help inform the other part of the conversation if time permits about. Uh event exceptions.
Okay. So, what's that?
You're sure.
I know, I. Okay, good. So far, anyway. Okay, so two questions on my end, first is. Would the commission like us to develop some sort of list with pre-authorized events? The goal being to increase the efficiency of the permitting process, both for some of the applicants. As well as for the commission itself. So kind of like Mallory said, the idea is if the event is on the list. It would basically proceed as a low-impact event, even if it's high impact, so. They would submit an I T A according to the low-impact deadline, so they don't have to be quite so far out with their I T A submission. The advisory committee for special events would approve that rather than having it come before the commission. And then they would continue the permit process as normal. Um, the thought is that staff could generate that initial list and then bring forward new proposals to the commission. Through our regular I T A workshops, so just for an example, maybe a couple times a year, January, July, something like that. Second question. If the answer to the first one is yes, that sounds like a good idea. What are some of the criteria that we would like to consider for getting an event on that list? So some suggestions are on the screen that you can see, so is it a recurring event? How long has it been permitted by the county? Are they in good standing? Is it a local organization that's applying? Do they have a good track record, right? Are they adhering to our policies, our processes? Um, are we getting good post-event feedback every time that they have their event? Is it a cultural, community, education, historical event, and then do we think it'll have. Either minimal or managed impact on the community and then on our emergency services? And that's it in a nutshell. Over to you all.
Yes to the first question.
Yes to the first.
Yes to the first question.
The rest of you guys keep your zip it.
To speak on that, uh the the what would you want, uh apart with the first question, uh. Long- uh longevity and recurrence, uh I mean, there's events. Uh, the half marathon, uh years, I mean, is the Jeep Safari longer than I've been alive, kinda thing, yeah, that really. Sets a good standing.
I think also being in good standing, I think that's important.
I think all the ones that you just mentioned have local ties, if they're not locally based. And I would put the music fest in there also.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
And we actually have, I think you all have a handout.
Yeah, we do, right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
It's linked as well, so you can look at that quick, just for, it says proposal, but it's really just an example of what this list. Could look like.
Yeah.
And a lot of what you all are mentioning are just like a first pass of things that maybe hit that criteria already, so.
Yeah, this looks great.
So I. You know, in the past, we've, you know, we've, over the years, we've discussed special events a lot and been through a lot of different schemes and. Last time we discussed le- le- legacy events, for lack of a better name, um. We ended up. I think what we ended up doing is that, you know, any any event could apply early, like if they wanted assurance, you know, that they were gonna be approved and wanted to. You know, do their planning, you know, more than a year ahead of time. Any event can apply, and the understanding was, you know, we might give early approval to an event if it. Basically, you know, satisfies some version of these criteria, but, you know, it wasn't completely nailed down. Um. So I I just wonder, I mean, I I do think. So so how does the the system that you're proposing, what advantages does it, does it offer over? What we have right now, which is the Jeep Safari or the Half Marathon can, you know, eighteen months ahead of time, you know, get approved.
Mallory, do you wanna, or I can, I.
Well, I personally, I think it just further streamlines things, cause then they could also follow the low-impact deadlines. And fees, uh but I I think it gives the peace of mind where they know. I guess potentially. Further in advance, but it wouldn't even have to come to the commission, it would be, yes, they can. They need to submit the dates, the committee can say, go ahead, and then we would have it set up where if there is a. We're able to reach a unanimous decision on something, we bring it back to you.
I think I think that's a fair, that's that's my only thought is that. If you do that, you're gonna have to give some, some capacity of some sort of discretion to the. Special events advisory committee, because if you're saying that they're going to go through and approve the event. I I don't know what mechanism currently exists, so let's say Jeep Safari applied.
And we would approve that already, the final, this is just.
Right, but if you're saying that you're removing it from the standard high-low, right, let's say they they go low. What happens if there's like their last minute, there's issue?
I think it once that's. Once they've already had their I T A approved, there is some exception in there for. You know, like a document is late, but there's a good justification, so I actually think.
Okay.
This list would still be approved by the commission, and so. It's really actually kind of just moving around the point of a legacy advantage or. And it also expands it to other cultural.
I think also um. Your time is valuable as commissioners, and we've had a few workshops where like multiple events are. Things that would fall into this category and where we do have to spend at least a little bit of time kind of discussing them and. And this would kind of take some of that time and give it back to you as commissioners as well, in addition to what Mallory said.
Uh, with this, uh just back to uh what would you want to see on this? Uh, if any conditions were to change, uh like the I see in the your yes column here. Uh, local sponsorship, a lot of uh yeses, if a company was ever to, in my eyes, if a company was ever to. Approach or sell that event in any form or fashion, we would revisit this event as a new event. Uh, because I don't want these holding more value uh as as a sales item, being a legacy event. Uh, in Grant County, it I. I want it more of a. Well, in my thoughts, more, uh it wouldn't bring value to the event, uh being sold to, let's say. Jeep Safari or uh Mad Moose Events, uh they sold their event to an out of uh. I say. Someone from out of town, I wouldn't want that to hold more value over someone else's event, uh.
You don't wanna be able to sell the permit.
Yep.
Buy my event and it comes with a pre-approved permit.
And it comes with the uh April.
Yeah, somebody in San Francisco could be.
Yeah, I I think that makes sense, cause I mean, one of the criteria is is a good track record, but if you've got a new. I mean, this seems to happen a lot with the foot races that they get sold up to some completely different organizer, although character race can actually change quite a bit.
Likewise, if we get bad feedback, we would obviously bring that forward and swap.
And for a process thing, just so you guys know, if you do give the nod for us to work on this at the next meeting. Would wanna review a draft ordinance update, and then we'd have a a secondary item that would be the rest that would come after. So this is just kind of direction, uh and then. I turn it back over to Kate in case she has anything, but I, I think this also has value in the next piece of the conversation. Exceptions.
I don't have anything for you, so.
I think some of the value of this too is uh. To be able to kind of black out some dates, so that as other applications come forward, you know, we could say, oh, well, that's. The classic marathon weekend, so we're full, that's the classic Jeep Safari, so that we're not. Uh watering down the events or putting events in competition with each other. And so, uh I think having more specific dates pegged to them than just like timeframe. You know, it's kind of like, if we're giving you this legacy event, pick a weekend, you know, whatever, so that it's not like they're coming in late. And saying, oh, actually, we're gonna move it to this other weekend, and we're already down the road with a different event, so. Uh, I think Jeep Safari is a great example of that, everybody knows exactly what week it's gonna be years in advance. And I think if that would kind of be conditioned for the legacy event. I think some sort of soft idea as like what you're saying, that I think if they could give either a year or nine months out a soft notice of what weekend it is. If we shorten that time period. A little bit beforehand, I don't know if, I mean, I guess we can guess when they're going to have the event, but mapping out subsequent events might be harder. Either e- even for these events, and I know that would be a benefit, but maybe if they. Get this gold star that they can be able to just shoot an email and say, hey, here are those days.
People still want them to split an ICA.
Right, I think similar.
And we could then ensure that it's. Fairly consistent with the year prior.
Sure.
So when we get an I T A, put it on that calendar, and so you all see that calendar at each of the quarterly workshops, and that's all I T A. So low and high impact, so I think you'd be able to see the dates that way.
But I I do think it it is a good point, but. You know, I, the legacy event doesn't come with. Ability to choose a date, you know, it's not that you. It's like, then you need to coordinate things.
I think that we're offering the event organizers something, like here's a little something for you guys to make it easier your application process. And in return, we're asking for a little for our planning process, so I think it's a kind of a give and take. And that we have a bit of collateral or whatever you want, you know, we have some. Some say that by giving somebody an easier application, guaranteed they. It's okay to ask for more for them in turn.
Okay, do you need any more feedback?
Uh, I will say that I feel like the list is a little long, so if you're gonna come up with a little list, I would say let's start with a short list. And then add things as we go.
Yeah, I I I second that.
She really only has six on the list. She's not saying everything that she should be on that, but really, I see it's six, correct?
Yeah, it's just an example of what it might look like.
I thought it was eleven, cause of that blue column. What's so what's your proposed legacy event list, is it six or eleven?
Well, it would come before you.
Yeah, it's not, right, the number of events is not something that we're discussing right now, it's just, this is what you could see. Something approximating this in the future, should you decide.
It's just an example, it's not.
Yeah.
Okay, so that in the far right column, that blue, I should ignore that blue shading.
This is, yeah, it's borrowed from twenty twenty two, so.
Okay.
And I can actually, I'll put it back at one hundred percent, cause then it goes away.
Cause then it goes away.
And now we have four of us.
Okay, any any further discussion on this?
Uh, that part.
Of that part?
Yeah.
Okay, is your second part?
Stop sharing your.
Well, I I wonder, um, you know, we we're supposed to have uh citizens be heard at six o'clock, if there's multiple parts coming up, maybe we could insert. Citizens be heard, then resume this.
Timeout.
Whatever.
Sure, is is there anyone who is wanting to speak at six o'clock? Not a completely different topic?
Actually, I'm gonna comment on the former topic, but I'll start.
Okay, because I mean, usually we don't let people talk twice, but I guess if it's unrelated, it's fine, okay, go for it.
Rock it out.
Okay.
My name is Kevin Dwyer, I'm a resident in Moab. I moved here in nineteen ninety, um I do have some experience with uh permitting, uh and um. Related matters, and with respect to permitting, especially. Uh, at the federal level, um permits are not considered property. And I think that that's an important distinction that you all might wanna make for your permit per your current permit holders. And um while they're not considered property um for federal concessionaires and such. Um, there's generous cooperation in terms of transferring the permit to a new. To a new entity and that's because it's generally believed that whatever the concessionaire is providing in terms of services. In this case, events, uh, those are worthwhile and you'd want to continue that. And so both parties. Uh, both the seller and the buyer of whatever entity and the associated a permit are interested in, you know. Creating continuity. And I think that that's something you could do if you, if you make the permit non-transferable. But cooperate in some sort of a transference, then you're gonna get the best of both worlds. Um, wish you luck in that. It's great to have events here. Um. I was here earlier and I spoke on a transportation matter. Can I continue to speak on that matter or no? Don't want to offend the council, the commission, sorry.
Three minutes, go ahead.
Minute for you.
I admitted two facts. So I'm back. Um, I moved here in nineteen ninety. I moved away in two thousand and one, but during that period of time in between, I promoted Moab. As the place to come to do outdoor recreation. Um, I promoted it all over the world. I took out magazine advertisements in Europe. I went to trade shows and promoted Moab and I was successful promoting Moab as the outdoor recreation capital of the world. I moved away in two thousand and one, went and got some graduate degrees and I could see from the news. And, uh, from my own experience down in Moab that, uh, we were getting overrun by tourists and there was a massive impacts happening here. And they weren't being well taken care of or, uh, resourced. And you all. Of course, are part of that and really appreciate your service in that area. But I was watching the news and I saw there were a lot of accidents and I'm gonna repeat some stuff that I said before, which is that. Um, myself and another person, Karen Guzman Newton, were students at the Wasatch Transportation Academy, which is a. Um, program of the College of Architecture and Planning at the University of Utah under Keith Bartholomew. And we were paired with graduate students. We looked into traffic fatalities. And we realized that Moab was very, a very dangerous place. And so when I moved back here in twenty twenty. Um, I decided to try and. Right some of my wrongs, uh, and help out the town in terms of, um, you know. Being a safe and healthy place for people to live. And so on Monday. Uh, April eighth, we're gonna give a presentation about our findings, um, from the Wasatch Transportation Academy. And what we found is that, uh. Moab is really Utah's most deadly and dangerous main street. And we'd like everybody to come over to the Grand County Library at six thirty. And listen to our presentation, ask questions, um, and come and find out how we can change that very quickly and affordably. Um, so we can change those odds and make Moab a safer place. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any else here speaking of citizens to be heard? If not, let's, um, resume the discussion on special events, et cetera. So what's next, Mallory?
Well, that's part, and I doubt, I doubt this is gonna be quick. So, um, one thing from the last conversation we had that was very brief, so I. Attempted to update the ordinance, uh, but I. I was told the wording that I used actually would do the opposite and would disincentivize people to use OSTA. And that's why there's no ordinance on, because I, I know that that is not the intent. Uh, so to be safe, I put together a handful of different options, including old ordinance options. Uh, for how you could. Build exceptions into OSTA. Uh, I think the. I think number three might be a good compromise, uh, because. It's for events that are wholly contained at OSTA and there actually aren't that many that would hit a special event. Uh, that's fully contained in there. That's over two hundred and fifty from the historical data. So I think, uh, if. You all wanted to keep it to allowing things wholly contained at OSTA without vendors, because that does trigger other things. Uh, it, we aren't focused on the for-profit or for nonprofits. It's just, are there vendors? Is it two hundred and fifty or less or a different number if you want? I think that leaves looking at the historical data, only a handful of events that would need to go through the process. Again, wholly contained that OSTA, uh, and of those events, a number of them. Have been on that pre-authorized list before. So, uh, following peace officer. The powwow, the rodeo is already an exception. Uh, there's another one. Forgetting, but this, there aren't a lot that are kind of in between that over two hundred and fifty. And not on a pre-authorized list. So I'm wondering if looking through all of these, if you guys have any immediate thoughts and. Also what Angie thinks and how we can find kind of a path forward that feels. Good with incentivizing, uh, my community and youth events at OSTA. But I guess from what we've gone through in the past with the philosophy and the values of special events. I did not get the sense at that time that you all wanted to kind of compete with business. So we wouldn't want. Like, no, you don't wanna disincentivize. People using OSTA. You want to incentivize community and youth. Events and you don't want to get into a place where you're actually competing with. Local venues that people would rent for conferences or what, you wanna make sure it's open for you.
Do you wanna go first? Do you want me to go?
Um. You go ahead.
Well, I guess that's my big, uh, you know, and maybe to revisit like the BLM patent. Um, exactly what is that facility for? I think it is actually a really good, and because I, I didn't, I wasn't at the last meeting, so sorry if you already discussed all of this. So I think just to revisit that really quick and I think that to me would solidify. You know, as, yeah.
See, you wanted the conversation that we had last time?
No, I think she's asking about what restrictions we have with the patent and I.
Right.
My understanding is kind of vague and it's that. One, you can't close it to the public and have another party that make a profit off of that.
Okay.
Any revenue generated is supposed to go back into OSTA.
Okay.
And then it's supposed to be for recreation purposes. And then Angie could also speak to this because we went through it.
Oh, right.
Uh, what is recreation? And, and I think most events could be recreation, but I don't know. It's like a rock show. Where people are buying and selling rocks. Is that recreation? I don't think so.
It, it is recreation is how you recreate and it's what you find joy in. So recreation to you could be reading a book under a tree. Uh, recreation to another person could be riding a bike. So it's how you recreate. Um, and our patent is it's community recreation. Um, and the fee schedule has to be within the, a fair market value. Uh, and that's something that I do have to send to BLM each year.
Okay.
Uh, for their approval.
And that, that definition of recreation that comes from, because I guess what matters is what they think recreation means.
Yeah.
Is what you were just saying.
Yeah, it's, it's how you recreate. It's what, how, what you find joy in and how you recreate for your personal time.
According to the BLM, that, that's what they would, that's how they.
No, we, yeah, we went through this all together with them.
And then I know Angie, you've talked to me in the past, so, so excuse my, my memory, but. What's your objective? So your goal is to have certain events not go through the special events process? Uh, or, or.
I wouldn't say that's a goal. My, my, my goal is just for OSTA to be utilized.
Okay.
And, uh, to be able to have events out there and be able to have a full calendar.
So you feel, but are you feeling like going through this special events process makes it more cumbersome to, to utilize those?
It, it does. And it also leaves, um, the calendar open. So, um. Say somebody wants to book something in July and we're open and available, but it's past the deadlines.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
I gotcha.
Or, or somebody like last year it happened. We had an event in September, a prime. Um, event month, they, they booked it for two weeks and then they canceled at the last minute.
They pulled out, we couldn't.
And it was a high-impact event.
Right, right.
So.
Right. So my only concerns, well, one, I mean, I think there's, I'm, I'm sure everybody has a ton of, um. Is, yeah, that idea of the big picture within the county, right? What else is going on on those weekends? Does that make sense?
No.
And, and you guys probably have already talked about this. And then the other thing is, is those services, right? Whether it's sheriffs, EMTs, making sure. That all of those players are on board.
Yep.
Right? And so the, I mean, I guess those are my big concerns, um, that we're following the BLM patent and that. That we're not overwhelming the community because all of a sudden we just throw another event in that hasn't gone through that process. And then making sure that. We have enough sheriffs on, on, you know, availability of all of our emergency services to serve that event, no matter how small. And, and so those are just my, I'm just kind of throwing out my concerns. Yep, I'm done.
Okay, uh. Angie, if you guys don't know, uh, Angie already has a OSTA, uh, checklist. Uh, additionally insured is one of the items on there. Uh, bathroom needs, I mean, grounds needs where fee schedule, I, I just, I mean. It's a list, so it's not just a. It wouldn't be just a, yeah, we need to fill the spot, throw it in, like. OSTA itself has.
Right.
Quite a criteria, uh, for its, uh, for its. Uh, for the events to held out there, be the Kinsenera, be the, uh, I mean, many things that you have that whole bullet point list.
Yeah.
Go ahead, or Stephen also wanted to talk.
One thing I was gonna say for. Why I put the two fifty in there is because. I'm also thinking of unintended consequences, right? So if you open things up and then in. The final week, Angie finds out, oh, you guys aren't wholly contained or you have this element and now you are a special event. If, if we go too far, then people might find out, wait, you can't go forward because you're not eligible. But you've missed the deadlines for special event permits. And that's why I'm trying to propose something. That's a slow change. And then I also think with the pre-authorized list, it's slow. I get, I'm also worried. That we could relax things too much. And, and then people will be like, oh, you changed it again. Now I don't have to do this. And then trying to say, well, wait. We wanna walk that back. It's just. I think slow changes are best and that's something simple. Would be safe right now.
Yeah.
I, I think that, if, right now, as it stands, if, if the commission wanted to just keep status quo and accepting. That events that are wholly contained within OSTA. From my point of view, the, the county has the ultimate control. We own the facility. We have, uh, staff that controls the facility. It's not like if, if we keep things status quo now, it's saying events wholly contained and that doesn't trigger an event. Angie has all the requirements that she has in place that protects the county. We've got, uh, the sales tax you have to go through, you have to get insurance and she can control that. Now, if we were concerned about them maybe trying to go above and beyond what they can technically do, we could have a notice that says, hey. You're signing up for this event with us. You are not a vet. You go through and you initial these things and check them off. That's, I mean, that basically contains everything that the county would want. I mean, we could. From, from my point of view, the county has the ability to maintain and control that, even if it doesn't go through a special event. Subcommittee, because Angie's gonna be on the hook and she's gonna be the person that's gonna manage these things. So as it stands. Right now, we do have continued control over it. Now, if we're changing these things for countywide, then yeah, we're gonna have other, other areas like the, uh, Red Earth venue. They, uh, they are subject, uh, to this only if they go offsite. So if they go have a wedding out there, they can have a venue every single day of the week. Now, they don't check in with the sheriff's department or other things. They dial nine one one and then hope for the best. Um, so on a lot of these things, I think. It's, it's a facility that's designed for a high-level number of people. And if the commission didn't feel comfortable, then they can direct staff to do certain things without having to create. A, a whole nother ordinance. But ultimately, whatever the commission wants to do, it's your guys' call, but I don't want the commission to think or feel hopeless because. We own, manage and operate that, that facility.
So a couple of points I wanted to touch on, um. The two fifty, I get where you're coming from on that and I don't really have a problem with that. Um, but two fifty out at OSTA's. That's pretty small. Um, if you look at the arena, just in seating inside the arena, um, we could, we could sit, um. Eleven fifty inside the arena. So two fifty is pretty small. If that's the number that you guys wanna agree on, that's fine. I'll take what I could get. Um, but the, the one thing would be the vending. I think if we could have a little more. Leeway with the vending on the events would be helpful just because more events do do vending. Even down to something simple as far as like a sporting event, wanting to sell T-shirts, um, a simple bake sale. Um, like softball, wanting to sell the little hair bows, um, for a little fundraiser, uh. So, so I, I would request that to be able to have, um, permission to have vendors, um, and to be able to submit, um. The spreadsheet that we use for special events. Um, if. That helps with the decision-making process, um, but also as far as being able to book the arena every day, that would. Not be able to be possible because there is a turnover, um, with the arena. Um, it does, depending on what type of event it is, it does take staff time to prep the arena and clean the arena. Um, like if we're going from a rodeo event to an expo event, it takes time to prep the ground and. Rail removal, um, and that could take, um, a couple of days depending on. What, like what they're going from to and vice versa. Uh, and if we're going from. Like an expo to a rodeo, we need a minimum of a week to work the ground. So that would be a whole week of the arena being closed.
So I'm also, as you're saying this, Kevin. Thinking about how confusing the calendars could get. If people are going and they're submitting IPAs and those are hitting Kate and she's going through the process and sending it out to everybody. But then at the same time, I'll still be getting booked for various things. And maybe that's another reason to like take this slowly so that it's not a large change and we don't run into issues that are massive. Instead, we could see things that have to be sorted out in a like slow, tapered process.
Um, I, I guess my, I mean, I, I recognize that it was, you know, an OSTA event is. Different from, you know, some of our other, you know, like a race event on public lands or something like that. And so the rules don't have to be exactly the same. There is this fact that we own the facility. But I do think that once an event gets beyond a certain number of participants, um, you know, there are impacts, you know, even if. It's contained in OSTA. So I guess I would be in favor. Of events past a certain threshold. And I don't know if that threshold is two fifty or maybe something a little bit higher because it's contained. Um, go through the ITA process. It helps us kind of sort things out, decide, um. You know, wh- whether there are certain times of year you're getting too crowded and, and I. And so I, and I, and I think that would go, I would have the same rule for anybody. Red Earth is hosting an event with a thousand people, you know, I think we wanna know about it. Require, you know, permit. So I guess I, I'm in favor of maybe some, I, I understand that there's a lot of gray areas with vending and commercial. Think we should try, you know, try to show some flexibility on that to streamline things. But I do, I do think that the biggest events should go through the ITA process, same as others. And, and the. I guess, you know, the one objection I've heard of that is, well, it means that we can't schedule a big event quickly because there's an application deadline. But that, that's true for everybody in the county. Yeah, so I, I think we should. Play by, you know, we, that is a sort of regulatory red tape burden we're imposing on people, but. We impose it for a reason and I think we should impose it on ourselves as well, so.
My view, OSTA is underutilized. We have a giant facility, it's not getting used. I I can't, we need to do whatever it takes to uh give Angie, give staff, give uh another board, whatever it is to get the facility utilized, it sits empty and it's not due to Angie or her staff. It is. It is public funds that are used and not used by the public more often than not. Every soccer event, every has two hundred and fifty people out there, a schedule. I invite my family out to a Kinsenera, to a party, I'll go over two hundred and fifty people. The facility itself is set up for thousands of people, we built it, like the county built. And it it just sits empty, I mean, week after week.
I think the key is how do we find ways to make community and youth stuff happen. But noting like we can't, I don't believe that we can close it to the public and have large events where people are generating revenue. But are they, yeah, how do we set it up where more people are going out there with their kids, with their families, more equestrian stuff?
Buy horses.
So when you say that, looking at the uh non-commercial, non-competitive part, and the two fifty in there. I don't know, there is, I I'm not an attorney, so I kind of, I guess, need guidance on some of the garbage of how to accomplish certain things, uh but also how to.
And I I can help craft on that, my my, where I'm getting hung up is we can do this in an ordinance, we could establish a very complex, complicated ordinance, where we can just manage this in-house. And that's the part where I I I I, you know, I I'm happy to look at it, to add language to it. I just think we're forcing people to go go through the special event, uh special event advisory committee, which Angie Angie's a member of. Go through that whole process, then either trigger high or low. And if it triggers high, then it has to come back to the commission for the ITA. And so it's it's kind of like, we're we're just, we can, you know, a thousand ways to skin a a, not a cat, but a orange, right? A thousand different ways to do it, and it just doesn't seem as the most effective way to do it through an an ordinance, but I I think we can, if that's what the commission wants us to do, we can go through and structure it through an ordinance, or the commission could just tell staff, hey, these seventeen things we want before you approve an event, and just do it in-house.
So can I use an example instead of trying to categorize it as an event? Uh because what I run into, um it didn't mean for it to come out like a large event, and that's not what I run into um most frequently, what I run into are uh what I would consider a smaller event, and it's usually something along the lines of like a junior rodeo or a barrel race, or maybe a roping event that wanna come in. Um and it's usually those events are um or or like the circus, like the circus wants to come in. And it's something that's usually on a circuit that they have time for, that they're coming in um like on a tour. Um on a route that they're coming in on, um and they'll they'll call me up and they'll wanna come in, like maybe a month out. Um and it's open on the calendar, but I can't do it because they've missed the ITA deadline. But it's something that's gonna be fully contained inside OSTA. Um and like like a circus will probably generate maybe max four hundred to five hundred people. They're not gonna fill the arena at all.
There are, there's a line where there are emergency responders, people that would need to know something like the other ones you described, I like to think they would capture in this exception. Right?
Yeah, well, yeah, and then the like barrel races, the like a barrel race would be something smaller. I would say that's probably like a hundred, a hundred and twenty-ish people. Um but still, the barrel races are being put through the special event process.
But they would be, this is where the language would mean a uh theories that they are an exception.
Yeah, but they, but it says non-competitive, it's a competitive sport.
Or.
That's competitive.
So one one, just to throw an idea out there, so we, I think correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, where things stand, you know, after you carefully reading what the special event ordinance actually says, you know, there's some broad, relatively broad exceptions for events contained entirely within OSTA. And we're discussing whether we wanna dial some of those exceptions back. We could just proceed for a year and just see what what kind of events happen out there, is it enough for us to be concerned about and just sort of revisit it, you know, six months from now or something like that. And and again, you could say to staff, we don't want events over a thousand people, that's that's the thing that's just brilliant about it is that's something that you guys could do, you don't have to add in, you could just, yeah, you could do that for six months. And you could give, you know, hypothetically, you could give no additional guidance to to staff and Angie would utilize it to whatever extent, then if all of a sudden events came in that you guys really didn't like, then you guys could note it and say, hey, you know, we're gonna start shaping our internal policy around this. Or another idea to throw out, you know, I'm sorry. We could just make the threshold, you know, five hundred or something like that, which I I think would it sounds like a lot of the events that you're, feel like you're missing out on, it would be able to fit under five hundred, but it would still give us the same kind of control we like on, you know, big events in the community, so.
You could theoretically put the word five hundred into the current ordinance and then do it based on trigger on a
So no ordinance for OSTA.
Well, I I I gave two different ideas, the second, yeah, there is an ordinance for OSTA, you adjust the language so that regardless, even if the event's contained, if it's more than five hundred people, we want it to go through the ITA process, that that's one idea. Um but, yeah, so if if I, if I'm understood right now, that number might be like two fifty or something, so we're we're raising it to make it easier to get events into OSTA, but not to sort of make things like. And and then the other is just, you know, just wait, wait to see until we have more data about what kind of events are actually coming through.
So do nothing right?
That that, yeah, but I I wasn't, again, I was throwing the ideas out, it wasn't. I I I like the five, keep setting it at five hundred. Let's see how that looks.
I mean, my my, sorry. I guess I I just have concerns around if we I agree, I mean, I I I think that Angie and her team are, I'm not, this isn't about that, it's it's about the bigger picture and support services that are supporting these events, and do they have those capabilities? Um and also, my concern is if we kind of start moving away from special, I mean, all these events will go, we'll just do X, Y, and Z and move away from the special events process, and
It has to be wholly contained though within the facility, that these, that's the small.
I know, but there's, there's some impactful, okay.
And and that's the hard thing, like uh not to pick on entities, Red Cliffs, Red Cliffs has a big convention out there. Uh Red Earth venue, I mean, those are the only ones, and they have to be wholly contained, so if there's a single trail ride.
I think five hundred seems fair, but I do think it's worth keeping in mind, like there's a a threshold also where the health department
Right.
triggers, they need to be involved, they need to be able to go, look, the fire department, I so I do think that there is some point.
Isn't that on her list? I mean, when you get to two hundred and fifty people, you call the sheriff and make sure he's fine with this, you call the health department.
If they serve food, they're gonna have to have a food vendors permit.
Right, so at what point is it then you're still a special event because you're doing all these things or just not?
But but I thought the biggest, the biggest downside to being a special event from Angie's point of view is the advance. This application deadline, so you can't do it, spur them up like a month.
And it's offsite, it's out impacting the entire county rather than just on location.
Yeah, so.
This isn't easy.
So, well, so struggle, suppose we just, you know, put in this five hundred threshold. Don't make it too picky, you know, show some flexibility in terms of the vendors and commercialness so that we don't you know, if if a largely nonprofit event is selling T-shirts, we don't wanna cap after them, but but to have the, have a kind of a hard trigger of five hundred attendees, and then we could revisit six months, after we've got some experience of how how that works.
So would that be looking at option three, changing two fifty to five hundred, taking out non-competitive? And taking out
We could just put, we could just put five hundred into the current ordinance right now, just at a cap of five hundred attendees.
Well, it that current ordinance doesn't have like wholly contained.
Yeah, I I I have not read all these options of detail, so I can't answer your questions. But I don't, I mean, that tests me, I don't know if other people.
Sounds good, I would have gone higher, but we're starting five hundred for the next six months.
Also, there's not a lot between.
I don't think I can get five hundred family members, I think I can get two hundred.
Okay, so maybe that's, that's the important direction, write a policy and approve it in future.
Will you repeat this again?
I was saying in kind of vague ways because I I don't, I'm not like conversant at all.
Okay.
Things, but I
Okay.
And so there's two options, is, are you talking about A or B for option?
But I'm not talking, let's see, if it's more than five hundred people, then it's in the special event process. Um I I think, I think the commercial trigger should be loosened up, you know, quite a bit, so that we don't get you know, minor commercial activity, making something a special that that wouldn't otherwise be. And, yeah, I I don't, I don't see the point of the competitive for these events wholly within OSTA, I don't think that should be. So we just, so really just, we're deciding on size.
But everything you were just saying is for OSTA.
Yeah, this is for. Well, well, looking at eight sixteen point zero four zero. Item B reads conferences, trainings, lectures, sporting events, or similar events held in a permitted permanent facility consistent with the facility's occupancy and design standards, not to exceed five hundred people. That's all you have to add.
They did it easier.
So just not to exceed five hundred attendees.
And that's, that's for.
For everybody, it would, then then you would bring in more supervision through the events like at Red Earth and uh Red Cliffs if they have a thousand people or over five hundred people there.
So we'd have to tell them. All right, and I
Pre-authorized next week?
Well, it does seem like one of the basic nuances is that Angie and Kate would probably have to have a shared calendar so that.
Um me and Kate probably talk, oh, she's we probably talk like five times a day.
Okay.
We're, we're pretty solid.
This is the tail end of it, not hopefully be, uh is she able to promote that she has the availability of openness there? To start today, I mean, are we, are we at that or are we two weeks out?
Well, this has to be approved.
Okay. Okay. We're already missing gaps of people.
But we're coming soon.
Okay.
Okay, so so we're done with this?
Small wins, small wins.
Push to our mic.
So.
You're gonna come to work tomorrow, right?
Do you need any help?
Okay, so our last last agenda item is a public hearing. And. Renee, it's here, great.
Here. Um. Uh this public hearing is to update or raise the attorney's the elected attorney's salary. So why we need to update or why we need to hold the public hearing is it's required by code to change an elected official's salary during our final discussions regarding the COLA. Um it was approved to have the three point two percent cost of living adjustment for all elected officials. That was the final motion there, and in prior discussions and 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 in that meeting, uh I was somewhat mistaken in not including the COLA in the ordinance for the county attorney. So uh when that got approved, it did not get included, so that would, that's what's triggering the need for the. Can you maybe confusion that came back?
Well, I, can I just, I'm just gonna, is that okay if I, can I ask a question or?
Sure, I just don't know if it to open the public hearing first?
I don't have a script in front of me. Okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing on the topic of Renée just presented. So is there any public comment? People, um, any commissioners have questions?
Yeah, I have questions. Um so my memory of this topic was was fairly contentious. And then it was decided, you know, that we were getting COLAs, but Renee was gonna send out an email to state who doesn't wanna take their COLA, and then people were gonna respond to that.
Correct.
Okay, you sent out the email? And and how many people responded?
Just one.
Right.
But in that, the ordinance for the commi- for all of the other elected officials did include the COLA. In the ordinance that sets this, sets the elected official salaries, the county attorney's COLA was not included.
So this this is just a mismatch between the language of what we said we were doing and the numbers that were in the spreadsheet. So that that seems very simple, so we're just correcting the spreadsheet to reflect the language and intention of the motion being passed.
And after the public hearing, an update to the ordinance.
Okay. Because we have to publicly list it, so the twenty, it 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 just basically just stayed the same as the twenty twenty three numbers, so then twenty twenty four it'll adjust, that's all of us. But we wanted to, we wanted to provide it uh in the public, so the public could have an opportunity to read it, because that's what statute requires.
Okay, captured, it's in the budget already, right?
I do believe there needs to be a budget amendment because we had the previous discussion of moving it to a different line in in the county attorney's budget.
Okay, but it could be captured in our omnibus mid-year budget, but I don't think. There's enough flexibility in the rest of the section. And I I went and talked to Ms. Van Horn in Gabe's office when he was out, and and basically I, she said, look, in your budget, you always we always run under in our budget, and so um I don't think we're not going to need additional funds uh from the general fund to be able to pay for it. So is this one of, so is this public hearing gonna stay open until some future Wednesday? Yes, I think it stays open until our Okay, so there's no further discussions, public hearing will remain open until five P M on Wednesday, April tenth. And be all done here before seven o'clock. Okay, so that's the end of the meeting.